Welcome, everyone. This Livingston City Commission meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Here, nice chair, Cal.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Knight.
Yeah.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is general public comment. So this is for comment. For items that are not on the agenda, individuals are reminded that public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controlled jurisdiction, or advisory power. So if there's any, we'll start in the room and then we'll go to online. So if there's folks in the room that want to give general public comment. Or items not on the agenda. Now is your chance. Hi, Leslie. And can you just kick us off the way you do with your name and address for the record?
Yeah. Uh, Leslie Pygell, the CEO from Livingston Chamber of Commerce, three oh three East Park Street. And I just wanted to kind of a continuation of the last city commission meeting in regards to the um, container waivers that we were having discussion about. I had a talk today with a gentleman that's putting on the downhill little slidey thing, you know.
The like box car?
Yeah, the box car, yeah. And he, you know, the conversation that we had, because he's been putting on the event. Um, he thought it was a wonderful job to ask the alcohol provider for the bracelet. So um, they're incredibly expensive. And I'll be talking with the DUI Task Force, who I'm a committee member of, um, that we can make a presentation to the city commission in regards adding those under the alcohol container waiver format so that whoever supplying the alcohol, the office does it, uh, cattomatic, just didn't know. Um, but he was going to ask them if they could please when they do the IDs to put the uh, wristbands on so they can keep underage folks from drinking when they shouldn't. So I just wanted to make that an announcement. You'll be seeing some come forward from the task force.
Um, thanks, Leslie. I don't want to use your time. Is there anything else you wanted to? Is that one of those fun deal?
Don't forget to come this Friday at the opening.
Oh, that's it. Great.
Yes, Friday. Okay.
It's Friday at five. Awesome. Thank you. And Leslie, I'll say, um, I would appreciate Mr. Gager if you can follow up. And I don't know if this needs commission. Anything from the commission or not, but if you want to see what may be done with staff, that'd be great.
Awesome.
Thanks, Leslie. Anyone else want to give general public comment? Hi, Patricia.
Hi. Hello. Patricia Grabo, two oh four East Bowser. I just wanted to um, express my um, appreciation of the business that has begun here in Livingston to create tiny houses. And I know the commission has passed a uh, housing ordinance and has endorsed some of the ideas, but I think it happened almost prematurely in terms of um, if the tiny house company, we endorse a business that could grow in this community and diversify our community in terms of economic well-being. But it also provides incentive for people who who want to work in Livingston. So this is workforce housing. And they could purchase these houses. And these houses actually grow in appreciation. So, and it could be a cooperative situation where they have, they they can have this thirty thirty houses per acre and a cooperative kind of situation for their housing itself. Uh, like a trailer park equivalent. So I am, I'm very enthusiastic about this for working with housing. I don't think the commission has, it had a chance to really review this as an option. Perhaps we should revisit our housing. Um, or that we have created and take a look at what is now developing in our our beautiful city. It just, if you put six of those, that's under eighteen workforce housing. And the thing is, you keep, you keep these people here. One things that happens with employment is they can go to somebody's house, but if they have housing and it's very good summer and winter, no problem. And if they have housing that they are purchasing, they stay here as employees as well. So it's a win-win situation. Thank you.
Thanks, Patricia. Is there anyone else that wants to give general public comment? Hi, James.
Hey. Good afternoon. My name is James.
Willetch. The last name is Willetch, I believe.
So, yeah, James Willetch, one of its out there. Good evening. Um, my comment is more of a question, uh, basically just asking if there's any updates or if there's been any movement on the overpass. Has that gone anywhere? I haven't seen anything in the newspaper. I haven't had any updates in any other avenues that I have. So just using my time real quick, just asking to see if we can get an update on that. Published somewhere.
Thank you.
Um, we normally don't do Q and A in public comment. However, given the interest of this topic, I will um, ask Mr. Gager to tell us where we are in the process.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, the city is expecting to hear back on the application that we submitted to the US Department of Transportation's Raise Grant Program by the end of June. And um, that will let us know our path forward if it is through that federal funding program or through other program measures or other self-funding measures. Um, but we do intend to push forward on the alternatives analysis one way or another once a funding plan is identified.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you also for breaking the rules to answer the question. Yeah.
It's a hot community.
Yeah, it is. Um, general public comment. Is there anyone else in the room that wants to give public comment?
I don't want to.
Hi, Jay.
Hello. I'm back from the dead.
It's been a while. Welcome back.
I know you missed.
Well, you know the drop name and address.
Yeah, I know. I know the girl. JK for three twenty-five something. Um, Melissa, I read in the paper, there was, I think it was, I don't, there was a photograph with you and Grant at the Washington School. Or I don't know which commissioner it was. It was a commissioner and Grant. And in the, just to the article uh, that I read, it said that a decision had to be made uh, by X date. Or this money from people that we don't know who they are uh, will disappear. Well, I worked for my father at the beautiful GM C Jewish API. And he would always caution friends and customers of his. And you know what? If a dealer says this this offer is only good for six hours, uh, it's not a good of a deal. And so I would be a little wary of you starting on a dotted line because somebody is pointing the trigger at your head. Uh, nothing is worth that kind of money. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jane. Welcome back. Welcome back. Also, it's good to see you here. Is there anyone else that wants to give general public comment? All right, I'm gonna look on. Oh, hello. Is that pen not working?
Oh, no, the one I had my.
Oh, guys. We can't help with that one, but.
That's okay.
Can you start with your name and address, please?
Yeah. My name is Dustin Fanning. I'm at thirty-three West Cambridge. And I just wanted to see if giving the reduction for the car shows, street closures was up on the docket for this evening.
That was.
Discussion.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a consent item.
Correct. Perfect.
Yeah, and the, I think the agenda will be posted at some point online too, on the big screen. Is there anyone else that wants to give public comment? And then I'll go online. All right, I'm looking online now. Is there anyone online that wants to give general public comment? Uh, all right, so general public comment is closed. So the first items on the agenda are the consent items. There are five consent items, commissioners. Are there any that you want to discuss?
Consent item E. Oh, oh.
Okay. So Quentin, or I mean Commissioner Schwartz is pointing E. So do I have a motion for A through D?
I'll make a motion to accept consent items A through D.
I'll second.
Motion by Lyons and second by Kale for A through D. Roll call, please.
Chair D for, I sure count for Commissioner Freeman. Now, consent item.
Yeah, approve item C.
It's A through D.
A through D.
Yeah, D, I'm sure.
You're good for all those, A, B, C, D?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Uh, four.
Commissioner Knight.
Four.
Motion passes. Consent item E, Commissioner Schwartz. You wanted that one full. Did you wanna chime in first?
Sure. Um. I think uh, car show is a great thing. And shutting down Main Street. Um, obviously, you probably, or I don't know if Leslie's thought the business owners down there. They're happy that on Saturday, having Main Street closed. Um, I as in our our staff report, um, waiving of the fees is a burden on the city and uh, on the taxpayers as well. We're not talking about that. Much more money. And if you have entry fees and stuff like that. And chamber members, um, I think it's only fair that, you know, pay what it does cost, you know, the city to close down the street and uh, and stuff like that. So, um, I'm against waiving the fee. That's what I'm saying. So I yield.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners? Anyone else wanna? Or say anything else? Nothing? Okay. So we have um, one more consent item, consent item E. Do I have a motion on consent item E? Um, and when you read it, can you just read it how it's highlighted in the packet, please, if you're going with the staffer? Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
We don't get to say anything.
Uh, Mr. Gager, do we usually do public comment on consent items?
We do.
And my understanding is no, since it's administrative.
Yep, this is administrative and there is a requirement of the comment for the second.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I think you can make the motion. We can get.
Okay.
Mr. Gager, if you want.
I move to reject the request to reduce these for the car shows by hold that.
So we have a motion by Schwartz.
I'll say again.
The second by Lyons. Um, now is when we would usually do public comment. We don't have to do public comment. I'm open to doing public comment if the, please, as I mentioned. All right, so we don't normally do public comment on consent items, but I'm happy to open public comment on consent item E. Leslie, did you hear that? What did you say? We don't normally open public comment for consent items, but we have a motion and a second. So I'm willing to open public comment on this consent item.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Because normally these would be put under this open discussed deny. Like, they're usually not as a consent item. I've been doing them for, you know, nine years, so.
And I'm happy to address that. Yeah.
Thank you. So uh, first of all, the um, the city since two thousand fourteen, uh, we've only had to be a hundred dollars, fifteen, sixteen, no charge, seventeen hundred dollars, eighteen, no charge, two thousand nineteen, uh, two hundred sixteen dollars, two thousand twenty-one, uh, two hundred dollars, and then twenty-two, two hundred sixty dollars. Um, we understand that this creeping up. It has nothing to do with our membership. The Chamber of Commerce is only a host for this nonprofit group of a car show, which brings economic benefits for our downtown businesses. This is the kickoff for our summer season. So it is what we started years ago, was creating the open, um, it was family fun day, historic family fun day at the museum. Deepa opens with their exhibit. The car show is moved to downtown. It used to be at Marx, and it was on the grass. And now we got it downtown. So it would benefit our downtown businesses. After last year, um, after the flood, our businesses need all the help they can. And, you know, the chamber put in the fifty dollars and we do the application for the car show folks every year. I print all kinds of things for them, the no parking signs. I help them follow all of the rules and regulations. And the car show is is really important to start off the season on June third, first Saturday of every year for seventeen years. And I hope that the city commission um, reconsiders uh, saying no to uh, waiving a total of, what is it, four hundred dollars? And, you know, these folks, they already, the fees are very minimal to enter the car show. And uh, you know, they don't have a lot of cars. We have a very small um, car club and we have some vendors in town that want to help pull it off. The library pulls out the little library book, you know, mobile and, you know, up to um, the special events application, it states right on the front of it that you can um, waive. The city staff can waive up to five hundred dollars for any event. The city staff has always done so because the city has become a both for the prey, both Christmas stroll and for the car show has always done that in exchange for being a sponsor. And I don't know why we would at some point start to change this. It's online page seventeen of our uh, special applications permit to the city. So um, you know, I I really wish that this would continue. Um, the, we have always worked very hard on moving the closures. So the city guys, if it, um, it's always on a Saturday. So they put out the closures on Friday and then we push them to the corner. The gentleman picked them up on Mondays. All of the big, you know, closures for the, you know, to block the streets off. We always had a wonderful working relationship with the city, um, you know, uh, streets department uh, to put on this event. So I really again hope that you reconsider. Uh, this simply means that they're gonna have to come up with six hundred dollars worth of sponsorship money at the same time as we have the rodeo, which is already got well a ton of money in this community. Um, sponsorship money has been flying out the door left and right, and there's not a whole lot of it left for a very small car club. So um, again, um, I appreciate it if you reconsider. You know, not at least cutting down the cost a little bit. So, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Is there anyone else? We'll start within the room that wants to give comment on consent item E? Just commending the courteous people of Livingston again, taking turns. I see you doing that. Thank you. Start with your name again. That'd be super helpful. Thank you.
Dustin Fanning, uh, Virginia three Cambridge. Uh, no, it's for me personally, uh, trying to definitely help with our aging car club. Uh, it's a big thing for me growing up. And then I won't change the last five years especially, but getting to see a lot of people coming down and even the amount of tourists that ends up walking through that didn't know about it and participating, having some fun has been very nice. Um, having downtown. When I talk to any of the folks that help us out at various businesses, I know it ends up being one of the best days of the summer next to rodeo. And I think they're great. So, yeah, I'm hoping that we are a net benefit. And yeah, just again call for reconsideration on that side.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to give public comment on this item?
JK for three twenty-five something. Uh, this car show has been going on as a feature for the residents of Park County for years. And how the city commission can even think about not waiving your speed after all the traffic that it brings into downtown, wherever you sit, and you fancy friends. And it's just a great time. You do, I do, I, I think you, did you waive the fee for the Summer Fest on there? Uh, because if, uh, to me, on there, if you waived the fee for the Summer Fest, uh, I think you could waive the fee for the car show. This is sort of just one of the few things that Livingston has to offer the residents of this city as a plus. Uh, and we have people saying, no, no, uh, well, uh, I'll remember this when I come time to look. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Is there anyone else that wants to give general, or not general, excuse me, public comment, consent item E? Thank you, James.
Yeah, all right, James Willetch, one of its out there. Um, avid car person. Uh, I think it would be good for the commissioners to waive the maximum amount for the fees of, I think, five hundred dollars is what your carer recommends. So in my humble opinion, I think it's a good move for the city to do that and keep this thing growing. All my car person. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
Here's your Grabo, two oh four East Town on New Street. Um, I I find it remarkable that we wouldn't waive the fees. Um, I've been, I said, downtown building order business association for fifteen years. And one of the things that things like the car show does is a group of people come together and they bring up business from all over the whole area. They advertise their car show. They bring the business to the downtown. They bring the businesses to the business, right, to the stockman or whatever. Businesses right there at the car show. And businesses love this thing. I I don't see how that has a negative side to it all because they bring business to our downtown. Last year, we were down twenty percent. In our businesses, we're struggling. And this is one of those wonderful things that we can, we can again get on our feet. We can again bring in additional money to our downtown. It is loved by this community. It has never not been waived. So I find it remarkable at a time when we need the business more than ever that we would consider doing anything but waiting to see for these wonderful people who put on this show. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Is there anyone else here in the room that wants to comment on consent item E? Welcome.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
My name is Michael Adams. I'm a park guy. I'd just like to make a comment. Take into consideration that we're a nonprofit. Don't know what else we can say except we are a nonprofit. So please look at your decision based on us being a nonprofit. And hopefully you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Is there anyone else in the room that wants to give comment on consent item E? All right, I'm gonna look online then. Anyone online that wants to give comment on consent item E?
Hello, this is Rusty Trespus. Can I make a comment?
Hi, Rusty. Please, go ahead.
Thanks for the opportunity. I would like to express my strong disagreement with your decision to deny a fee waiver for the car show as well. I find the reasoning provided claiming that it would be a loss of revenue to the general fund or cost to city money to be laughable. In fact, it is quite the opposite as the seventeenth annual car show, particularly with its offer to the city to be a sponsor. In my opinion, brings a far greater value to the city. The decision to deny the fee waiver seems to lack neighborly consideration and fails to support the community it serves. It's disheartening to witness such a lack of support for a longstanding event that contributes to the vibrancy and unity of the community. Instead of dismissing the fee waiver, I believe the ci- city should explore alternative methods to generate revenue without burdening its residents. And change the Livingston municipal code so that it can support a reduction of such fee waivers in the future. It is crucial for the city to foster an environment that encourages community engagement, supports local events, and values the contributions made by its residents. The car show with its sponsorship offer and the benefits it brings deserves recognition and support from the city. I respectfully urge the commission to reconsider its decision and find a way to facilitate the success of this car show. Please promote good leadership and strive to promote a more inclusive, supportive, and collaborative relationship between the city and its community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rusty. Is there anyone else online that wants to give public comment on consent item E? All right, so public comment on consent item E is closed. Um, there were some questions. I think I'd like to start with a question, a process question, and then we can move to if commissioners have questions. Um, so one of the initial questions was why is this and a consent item instead of under action items? So I, I'm gonna do my best, Mr. Gager, to answer this, and then I'm gonna ask you to come in and add to the conversation. But um, so typically consent items, even if you just look at this list of consent items are administrative items that typically the executive branch of government, i.e. staff, have control over. Um, it hasn't, obviously, this is an executive item permitting um, street closures, things like that, because that has to do with safety. And so it goes through staff, not through a commission process. And if you remember, at one of the most recent meetings, it was one or two meetings ago, we were talking about, again, permits and waiving um, waiving uh, particular ordinances for particular events. And Commissioner Lyons brought up that perhaps we could have a better process for moving things through. Um, and the commission was in agreement with Commissioner Lyons. And so this is in response, this agenda change, or I should say, it's really putting the executive things in the executive part of the agenda was in response to the commission asking for a more efficient agenda. Um, so that's how that came to be. Is there anything that you would add, Mr. Gager?
Uh, no, no, as as far as that, and you know, I would point out that I do set the agenda for the meetings, and I did so in response to a request from a commissioner to attempt to streamline the the flow of the process.
Uh, to be clear, it was my understanding that you've had more than one commissioner that was supporting, as you don't do things for one commissioner, um, as much as any one of us might like them on a particular day. That's not how it works. Um, okay, is, is there anything that commissioners want to add to that?
That specific part?
Yeah. No. Okay. So, um, now I think that we might have things that we want to say. Who wants to go first, commissioners? Any follow-up questions?
I'm going to go first.
Thank you.
I'm the bad person in the room, but um, we're talking four hundred and thirty dollars here. Um, making us out to be kind of the bullies here. I think that's ridiculous. Um, why should we subsidize a car show and stuff like that? If if you can't afford it, there's other venues in town where, you know, perhaps we can do it, but um, I yeah, everybody says not that big of a deal. Well, then come up with the four hundred and thirty dollars, the extra four hundred and thirty dollars to make it happen. Which is, you know, over above the, you know, the fee waiver. So, yeah, that's requested. Um, and secondly, you know, this is all the general fund. We, you know, any revenue generated out of the car show or shopping and stuff like that, we, let me remind you, we do not have a sales tax, so we do not profit in any way from that. So, but our businesses do. And um, um, I have talked to several business owners and it's not um, always beneficial to them. They find it um, their sales are your sales are off depending on what, you know, business it is and stuff like that, so. It's not a total win-win situation. Um, there are pros and cons to it. Um, I love the car show. I attended and, uh, but, you know, we're wibbling over, you know, a few hundred dollars here, and, uh, I don't think it's fair to, what's the city have to pick up the debt?
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons?
Um, this is for Mr. Gager. I'm, I'm curious how often the fee waiver requests, I mean, you're we're just kind of getting into event season in, in Livingston, so you might not have a, a particularly great brand reference, but, to your knowledge, how often do we get these requests? We'll start there.
Uh, it, my understanding from talking to staff is that the most frequent requests for fee waivers are related to the road closure. Um, because that is one of the highest fees that we have related to events. And, um, so it's typically those events that have road closures associated with them. And so we get several of those throughout the, throughout the summer. Um, I will say in my, uh, time as city manager, I'll be brief, this is the first, um, fee, uh, waiver requested the city has received. And so, um, you know, yeah, I'll leave that.
So then, uh, my second question, I, you know, there we provide many services as a city, um, that are funded in many ways. largely through taxes, but in some ways through, through fees. And, uh, my, I guess my question is is there you know, there are some, there are some services that the city provides that are not directly charged. You, you don't, as a citizen or as a recipient of that service, you don't, you're not charged directly a fee. My conception of, of why in some circumstances we might charge a fee is to have some sort of control over a, a particular action. Uh, and so, you know, we, we want to be able to have some we, we control the, the rights of way, we control red and main street. So this is a way that we influence or, you know, create a process around that. You know, I, I, I'm, I, I'm very compelled by the, the arguments made by, um, citizens today. And I'm also worried about this process going forward, creating an opportunity to pick favorites. And I'm curious, Mr. Gager, if you have any ideas on I guess the how to avoid picking favorites, um, and how to if you have any additional context on, you know, why this is a service that, that we would charge for and others we would, you know, incorporate into our spending from the general fund.
Yeah, excellent question, Commissioner. The, the fee associated with the road closure, like many, all of our other fees are related to the cost of providing the service. And, and so fees are charged for, you know, those services that are kind of over and above and beyond the general scope of government, right? Those services that we provide police, fire. Um, you know, we can, we can go down the list and name a few. Um, however, closing a road for a special event for a private organization, um, somewhat stretches the bounds of services that, that we provide as just the general government and, you know, the city of Livingston. And so the fee for this, like other fees, is, um, it's predicated on the cost of providing the service. And, and this fee specifically road closures, um, you know, while the applicant made, uh, comments on the process that's been followed in the past. It's my understanding that's not the process that's involved the last several years because the act of, of closing and then reopening a road is, is actually a little bit more complicated than, um, it may appear to be. And so we actually don't allow, uh, non-city staff members at this point to either close or open a road. Um, and something we talked about at a staff level, if we would, you know, qualify a contractor to do that. Um, but members of the general public, that generally isn't something that we prefer to do. And so, you know, this event being on a Saturday, um, it, it does take more than one employee to, you know, do a proper road closure. And so, uh, you know, when we calculate those overtime hours, it actually, um, at this point exceeds the, the fee, um, that we're charging. We are going to reexamine those fees as part of the budget process. And so, um, you know, that, that fee is there for a reason. Um, like I said, in the future, we are looking at, at allowing, you know, qualified private sector contractors to do road closures, and that may offer some, some relief and, and reduce the fee if applicants uh, go that route. But, you know, we'll, we'll address that with you folks. And then as far as, as plain favorites, you know, that, that really is, is a, a concern of mine. Kind of the last point that you mentioned. And, and that really is the question, you know, or, or why this question is before you, um, is, is to um, you know, daylight the process and, and ensure that the commission and the, and the residents of the community, taxpayers um, know that, that the city manager is not picking favorites. And, you know, maybe I'm a car guy, maybe I'm not. That's irrelevant to this conversation. I think that every organization that comes here to think they're a road closure ought to be, you know, treated fairly and, and given the same opportunity. Unfortunately, at this time, there is no provision in Livingston Municipal Code to waive, uh, fees. And so that's why the citation is before you. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. I really appreciate that. And I, um, to your point about the your last point about when the, the next one comes before us. Is a, is, I'm interested in that because, um, if you think about it, if we're waiving a fee here, that we're gonna have to pick it up somewhere else. Um, and that might end up contributing to, to needing a higher fee in the future. So I, I appreciate that point. I
Other commissioners? Commission or Vice Chair Kill? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Kill.
Um, so I know that we this came up last year, um, during the discussion about these fees, and I and I want to bring it up again. And, and just as a reminder that the T-bid through Explore Livingston offers event grant funding um, for these types of things. And so organizations can apply for that money. That money comes from uh, two dollars per room night of lodging facility. So they have said in the past that they would like to be able to help give grant funding for these, these groups to help offset this money so that the city does not have to. And that is coming from our tourists, our visitors. Um, and so that's not coming out of the pockets of our taxpayers and out of our general fund. And mentioned this last year. I'm mentioning it again. I, I, I would encourage this organization to apply for those funds um, to help offset those costs. It's available.
I'm gonna request that people keep their voices down that are sitting in the chairs because it does make it harder to hear up here, and it picks up everything. Public comment is closed. I gave folks plenty of chances and just it's part of decorum and keeping a respectful space. Thank you so much. Vice Chair Kill, you still have the floor when you're interrupted.
Um, I thi- I think that's all that I've had. I, I had, uh, Commissioner Lyons ask the questions that I wanted to ask how much it's costing the city and where we are, we were at with that, with staffing. Um, but just as a reminder, there is that resource um, that could help other organizations in town as well. Um, I was certainly in my, as my day job, applied for that funding for months. So it's, it's there and available, and it is a nice thing to have to help offset these costs, so. I will yield.
And I'm sorry that I didn't have to do. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, very complicated. Where do you stop and what do you, what do you do? You know, it's, it's a really tough issue. And we still incur a cost no matter what it is. So we can't, we can't walk away from that. But it's a tough one because this is gonna come up for so many different things. And unless you establish some kind of theory or something that makes sense. Where do you stop and where do you start? It's, uh, I hope you understand that from a standpoint of looking at it. But it's gonna come up again next year if we don't, you know, make some sense out of it. And it's, uh, this is a tough one. The thing is, we incur a cost. I hope everybody understands that. So that, that's the place that we start. And you can't start one thing for somebody and that for another thing. So I wish we had a good answer. Uh, I, I don't but, uh, to not charge a fee at all while we are gonna incur a cost uh, doesn't make sense to me. So I yield.
Thank you. Um, I would, I want to thank you, Vice Chair Kill, for bringing up this other opportunity. I believe, I remember this conversation. It sounds like Explore Livingston was open to working with, um, nonprofits for things just like this. So I would hope that this group, um, Livingston Wheels Car Club could reach out to the folks there and see what's possible. Commissioner Lyons asked my question also about cost to close, and I'm not mad about it. Thank you for asking that. Um, I wanted to ask, Mr. Gager, do you know, it sounds like, so it sounds like what you're saying is the most expensive, um, the most expensive events are ones that are on weekends that involve road closures. Is that generally?
Yes.
I mean, caveat is
Anything that, that uses staff time, overtime on the weekend is, is costly, but road closures are a good example of that.
And, and I also want to say I'm glad that we're doing it in a safety first mentality, and it's not just anyone closing city streets because that sounds like a recipe for danger and like injury. So, um, I guess my question is, do you know if there were alternate locations considered? Since this apparently is one of the more expensive places to put a car show?
Uh, I'm not aware whether the applicant considered other locations that would require a closure.
With the city even, like other city locations where they could have had a car show that didn't involve a road closure?
Um, no, they, they inquire about this location, and that's what their application was.
Just seeing there, there might be other places that didn't cost as much money or involve a road closure to have a car show. So moving forward, potentially that could be another avenue, another solution for the Livingston Wheels Car Club. Is to discuss that with staff, and I think that would be most appropriate at staff level, and if you needed the commission, you know, for I, because not all decisions require the commission and some do. So, um, that was my question or my questions. I, um, I feel like over the years on the commission, I've brought this up before. My concern about, um, waiving all fees all of the time, or most fees, most of the time, when, um, we're also told that we, our budget is under a strain when it comes to paying overtime salaries for various departments. And also we are understaffed quite a bit of the time in these same departments that we're asking to pull overtime. So those are my thoughts. As we move into the budget season or through the budget season. Uh, Commissioners, is there anything else you want to say? Otherwise, it sounds like we've all had a chance to chime in. We have a motion.
Oh, yeah, I'll just
Yeah, please, Commissioner.
And not just me that, um, uh, is rejecting this, uh, staff is recommending this as well, if you look at the checkup. Um, I don't make fun of being the bad guy under, but, um, but, you know, staff has looked at this and, uh, and to keep it equitable and stuff like that, not play favors because grand pays, uh, this is the way we need to go. Thank you. Are you?
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners? All right, so we have a motion, uh, to reject the request to reduce fees for the car show special event, the motions by Schwartz. And the second is by Lyons. Roll call, please.
Your name, or Vice Chair Kill, or Commissioner Brady?
Or
Commissioner Ford?
Or
Commissioner Lyons.
Or
Motion passes. Now we're moving into proclamations. It's a big night for proclamations in the city of Livingston. We have three. The first one is the proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, declaring May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three as National Kids to Park Day in Livingston, Montana. Whereas May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three is the Twelfth Kids to Park Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas the Kids to Park State empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, waters, state and national parks. And whereas we should encourage more kids to lead a more active lifestyle to combat childhood health issues such as obesity, diabetes, hypertension. And whereas Kids to Park State will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors. And whereas Kids to Park State will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I am Melissa News' Chair, do hereby proclaim May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three to be Kids to Park State in Livingston, Montana. Further, I urge all Livingston residents to make time on May twentieth, two thousand twenty-three, and every other day for that matter, to take their children to their, in their lives to a neighborhood, state or national park. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair News. And I would take the opportunity to recognize our city recreation manager, Maggie Tar, who was in the room somewhere because she does take the kids to parks.
And, uh, Maggie?
And, you know, I'll, I'll see you with my kids at the park on Saturday.
Awesome. Commissioners, anything anyone wants to add? All parks all the time.
Yeah.
Go. It's good for that.
Especially this case. Special endorsement by Commissioner Lyons. All right, next proclamation on the list is the proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, recognizing National Public Works Week, May twenty-first and twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. One of my favorite weeks of the year. I'm just gonna say it. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, heck quality of life and well-being of the people of the city of Livingston. And whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without the dedicated effort of public works professionals or engineers, managers and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it's in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children of the city of Livingston to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-third annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now, resolved, I am Melissa News, Chair of the Livingston City Commission, do hereby designate the week, May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three as National Public Works Weeks. I urge all citizens with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety and quality of life. Mr. Gager?
Thank you, Chair News. I, uh, in anticipation of next week, would recognize the hard work of, uh, all of our public works employees and especially recognize Grace Tidwell, Jay Taylor, Shannon Holm, Martha O'Lord, and, uh,
Thank you guys for being here.
And, 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 yeah.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Thank you all for being here.
Uh, and there are others in Public Works Department who couldn't be with us here tonight. It's not just those four. So, uh, I, I take this opportunity to thank them for their service next week.
I like that we can just go straight from parks to public works. Like, maybe we can just be like a party
Yeah.
For all that apartments. Other commissioners, you know, this is, I still need to get the t-shirts made
Yeah.
for public works with the heart. And, oh, I'm working on it. Any of you want to add anything to this one?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. It's really nice to see your faces. Thank you. Um, next up, last and not least, a proclamation of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, declaring acceptance and openness among all our citizens. Whereas it's the policy of the city of Livingston to prevent harassment and discrimination based upon race, color, sex, gender identity expression, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, disability or housing status. And whereas the city of Livingston seeks to continue to become more equitable, welcoming and connected community and is dedicated to protecting all residents from hate crimes and seeks to end bigotry in all forms. And whereas the FBI has defined a hate crime as a criminal offense against a person or property motivated in whole or in part by an offender's bias against a race, religion, disability, sexual orientation, ethnicity, gender or gender identity. And whereas data from the FBI reports in twenty nineteen, fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-eight law enforcement agencies Participated in the hate crime statistics program. Of those agencies. Two thousand one hundred seventy-two reported seven thousand three hundred fourteen hate crimes. Hate crime incidents involving eight thousand five hundred fifty-nine offenses, one thousand three hundred ninety-five offenses. Were based on sexual orientation bias reports indicate sixty-two point two percent. Were classified as anti-gay male bias. Twenty-four point five percent were prompted by anti-lesbian, gay, bisexual or transgender bias. Ten point two percent were classified as anti-lesbian bias. One point nine percent were classified as anti-bisexual bias. One point two percent were the result of anti-heterosexual bias. Whereas the Human Rights Campaign reported that twenty twenty-one was the deadliest year on record for trans and gender non-conforming people across the nation. And whereas the City Commission of the City of Livingston wishes to publicly support and stand in solidarity with all members of our community. By condemning hate activity, opposing hateful and hurtful actions and supporting the LGBTQ plus community for the purpose of establishing a city. That is safe, welcoming and embraces all its members. Now therefore the city, the Livingston City Commission pledges to stand firmly with our community members and support the efforts of our allies. By condemning hate crimes, challenging bigotry and discrimination, supporting marginalized people. And advocating for policies and legislation that honor everyone's basic human rights. So that we are all valued and accepted in our community. And be it further resolved, I'm Melissa News Chair of the City Commission. To hereby encourage other municipal leaders across our state and nation. To join us to strengthen our fight against all forms of discrimination and tolerance and hateful activity. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes, and I will not say much other than to say that I hope that this community thanks all as feel as welcome as they have been here for the last six months.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Shorts.
Um, was this sponsored by the Human Rights? Committee or?
Um, there, I would.
Campaign, I mean.
The, you may remember a few years ago when some things happened, Commissioner Schwartz, um. That we were in conversation with the Human Rights Network.
Right.
Um, and. I've recently been in touch with them again, and so we've, um, worked on updating this proclamation in light of recent conversations.
Great. I love it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other Commissioners?
Thanks for reading. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for. Yeah, thanks for being a commission that unanimously supports everyone in our community.
Absolutely.
Alright. So moving on, past proclamations. Were to schedule public comment. I need a drink of water. So while I drink water, I'm gonna ask Mr. Gager, um. Well, actually, Mr. Gager, I want to say first, we've. Discussed, um, we're gonna shift, if it's okay with the commission, I'd like to shift something on the agenda.
Sure.
Um, given the number of people and items on the agenda tonight, I'd like to move. Action item, um, ten A.
Alright.
So ten A is discuss a per tonight special exemption permit request from Shane Bellani Center. I'm gonna move that up, um, between, uh, six B and six C. So it's gonna go six A, six B, ten A, six C.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Okay, it should help with the flow of the meeting and make it a little bit easier for people to engage and follow along. And, uh. Alright, so we're all good with that. So first on the list is Community Support Team Introduction to Commission, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. It is my pleasure to introduce the three ladies from the Park County Community Support Team. Let's come introduce yourselves and the community support team is funded, um, by a Pima grant if I under grant directly. And, uh, the team will be in Park County over the coming months, but I will allow them to talk about their work over that amount of time.
Thank you.
Hello Commissioners, uh, I'm Casey Botler and we have Melinda Garrett, Maria Data. And the three of us are the community support team as mentioned. Uh, we are, as, as also mentioned, we're through the Park County Health Department and we will be doing outreach of communities around Park County. To find out how people who were impacted by last year's flood are doing. As we connect with folks, we'll be listening to their stories to learn how the flood impacted their lives. We'll be offering an empathetic ear, uh, learning if they have any current needs. And sharing information about available resources in their area. This is a short-term program that will end in the fall. It is meant to support folks through the anniversary of a flood. And connect people to the many agencies and nonprofits who provide services in an effort to further strengthen our, our community. If you see us out and about, I'd encourage you to come say hello. Uh, we'd love to hear about your experiences in regard to the flood and about anyone who might benefit from connecting with us. Uh, and if you need to get in touch with us, uh, you can just call or stop in the health department. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Gager, do you, will we have information on our website to make it easy for people to find these folks?
Absolutely.
Um, other Commissioners, do you have anything you want to ask or?
I'm just, thank you. Um, I'm part of the health board, so I was excited to hear that we were able to hire three instead of two. Uh, because we had three amazing, there were three amazing applicants, so thank you so much. I know two of you, I, I don't know. But, um, I, maybe I will soon and I'm, I'm excited and encouraged to have you, uh, being out about the summer and talking folks, so thank you.
This is super important. Thank you for everything you do for Livingston and Park County. Thank you. Alright, so next on the, um. Agenda is. The Recreation Department update, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. Uh, in keeping with our recent string of department updates, I have asked Maggie Tar from the Recreation Departments. To come and give us an update on all the good work they're doing over there and, uh, it's well timed with it's Park State, so. Maggie, thank you.
Yeah, um, I didn't have any good news. But she was gonna make us do like warmups. Oh, here we go. Right here for it, Maggie. Well, thank you all for having me. My name's Maggie Tar and I'm the City of Livingston Recreation Manager. Um, I am here to give you an update and tell you about how much I love recreation and parks and why it's valuable. To our entire community from acorns to oaks, as we like to say. Uh, I prepared some slides that it's gonna help me slide through here just. To give you some statistics of highlights in our programming that stand out, um, not, it doesn't encompass everything that we do. Uh, we have our, um, we are in a lot of, of spaces, so from parks to youth, the programming. Um, special events will kind of cascade through this, but some highlights to share with you. Uh, especially at this moment, just got a call about potential lightning at T-ball practices, so we're calling practices right this second. Um, but our youth sport programs have been blowing up over the past couple of years. When I began with the city nine years ago, I had a ball park, um, a civic center. And a basketball program that had about ninety kiddos in it. And now we are up to two hundred and seventy-eight basketball players, K through six. Uh, we've introduced a flag football program in collaboration with the Blank Foundation and the Atlanta Falcons and that was. In response to a suffering high school football program, so we raised our hands and said, you know, we're missing, there's a gap missing. It's the youth introductory piece of the programming, so. Uh, with the support of the Atlanta Falcons, that program runs for free to the community members and so we see on average about a hundred and seven, um, third through sixth graders in that programming. And we have soon, most recently taken on the T-ball and coach pitch endeavor, so Livingston Baseball and Softball Association. Was captaining all of baseball and softball in the community and they recognized, as did we, our strength with entry level programming and accessibility. Our ability to scholarship above and beyond and our support from our sponsors, so. We took on the T-ball and coach pitch portions, the entry level league of baseball, eight serving ages four through eight, so it has an early childhood component. And this year we have two hundred and six participants out there, that's thirty-one coaches helping us out this season. Um, that equates to twelve T-ball teams and eight, eight coach pitch teams. Um, overall, the biggest acknowledgements are that we serve five hundred and ninety-one youth ages four to six, four ages four pre-k. To sixth grade, we have ninety-two trained coaches and that's with the supportive funds like the Blank Foundation that get us through, um, National Alliance for Youth Sports. In the early days, it was a list that we would have you fill out an application if you're an interested coach, we would pass on your information to city attorney and to law enforcement to check. Uh, now this is a really formalized nationwide background check. Um, we have training that's at high capacity and it's an opportunity for these coaches to embrace what they do and become members. And, you know, my favorite part about recreation is the magic moments that ha- happen outside of what it is that we do on a day to day. So day to day, you can see those stats, we serve lots of little kiddos, this is great, six hundred kiddos. Um, but the bond that we've created with those ninety-two coaches is overwhelmingly the majority and the strength that we carry. Because these individuals are going to continue to influence our kids, um, with years to come. It's like the next group that's gonna talk to you about the arts and culture. Space of our community, it's what we do and if it all comes from our heart and we have these incredibly well-trained individuals that just keep giving back. And the love spreads and you want to be a part of that community too, um, that just is the success in it all, so we were able to benefit there. That leads to highlighting our adult sports and movement programs. Um, I'll just put this stat out there because you guys keep hearing about pickleball, four hundred and sixty-eight hours of pickleball this year. Um, they, these guys run currently three, um, hours a day, if they can do seven, I think they would, eight. Um, so three hours a day, three times a week. Upset with me if I have to edit their schedule a little bit, thanks to the new door locking system at the civic center, we formerly had to close on holidays because. Thank you guys for giving us a day off, um, we don't work on those days, but now we've got the lock control system. And so they can self-enter and still utilize the facility because Memorial Day pickleball is happening, so you have nothing to do. Come on down. Um, you know, the partnership programs are massive and what we do, obviously with our staff load, we can't accommodate it all. Uh, and we can't operate it all, so pickleball is a self-contained club. Uh, motivated, they're ready to pass the hat on to us, we're not quite ready to accept that because the demand will continue to grow. Uh, but the numbers are incredible with pickleball. Uh, Blades Fitness is Jenny Blades, she's an individual provider and she has expanded to four fitness classes. A week at the civic center, the agreement that we have with her is to keep it low cost and affordable, so it's five dollars a class. Um, you can buy a pass, you can come twice a day on Thursdays, Monday, Tuesday, different times. Um, and so it's all about accessibility and those partnerships and how we have the, the deals essentially that we have. Tai Chi is a volunteer group right now, we have another individual interested in professionally instructing Tai Chi. Um, it is catching on, Joe currently does a great job, he serves during open walking, the gym is open, folks are walking around him and he's instructing Tai Chi. So if anybody is interested in the community and just picking up the basics, um, and getting a little bit of zen in their hearts, that's the way to go. Or silence, I talk too much, so I should have been down there. Um, and then the big things that we currently run are adult volleyball league, adult softball league. And then we have a pickup basketball program in the wintertime. Again, these numbers have just grown, especially post-COVID, you know, you, um. All of recreation, we suffered there for in twenty twenty, we're grateful that we got to keep our department and that we, um, were able to be allocated to different resources. While we were in the intermediary of trying to survive that COVID year, but now and since then, everybody really is gunning for, um. For community space and spaces where they feel welcomed. Adult volleyball league, when I started. Nine years ago, we had about four teams, about the same teams every time, one team always won, now we're up to twelve teams, a hundred and ten individuals. And then, oh, you have a softball league, so then that carries into, um, the softball collaboration. Pickup basketball, we ran as a drop-in program this winter and it thrived, um, and so I think that just our service. To active adults is incredible, um, and the growth of that is just, is just the nature of it. People come with a great attitude, all of Livingston, which is great, as we can easily say, we're not Bozeman, we're Livingston, it's all about fun, community collaboration. Uh, we're not here to win massive trophies and to travel the world in this sport, so be welcoming and warm to all. And it's been really incredible to see that dynamic sort of pass along through, um, through those offerings. And all of these adults moving their bodies, which we all know is very important. Um, coming up this summer, these are just some statistics on camps that we offered last summer. These are three returning camps that we'll offer this summer, these are contract partners, so similar to Blades Fitness. Uh, these guys come in and they are self, self-contained, self-sufficient, you'll see common denominator, my children roll through pictures because I have signed their waiver. And, um, and so these are contract partners, it's incredible because we get a high-level camp. A high-level quality of product that comes in with big massive training that otherwise we can't accommodate in our smaller level. Um, my goal on a daily basis is to ensure that these camps are affordable. So Skyhawk, Super Tots, Be Limitless, in their natural environments of Spokane, Washington and Los Angeles, California. Um, they're quadruple the pricing. Bozeman over the hill is probably double the pricing, but with our agreements and. Giving up some of maybe our facility commission, um, writing grants to subsidize, being able to offer scholarships on our own. Um, we're able to really keep these accessible and affordable to our public, so the goal currently, which is still a strain, is. A week-long Skyhawk Sports Camp still sits under two hundred dollars a week. If you look over in Bozeman, camps are running at about four hundred and some odd right now. Um, so that's just, as we all know, the cost of living strain that we're all going through, so. I work, I and my team work very hard to ensure that we keep these rates, um, accessible to the public. So last summer, we saw a hundred and ninety-two participants in the Skyhawk Sports Camp, that's about a seven-week camp. Uh, give or take those gaps in the summer with the fourth of July week, serves elementary age first grade into sixth grade. Super Tots is our early childhood com- component of that. Um, two to six-year-olds and their little clinics and we had about ninety kiddos in those participating activities. And then Be Limitless Soccer is a collaboration with Livingston Soccer Association, ourselves at Livingston Rec. And, um, Be Limitless is the higher caliber training program for soccer, but, uh, these coaches were just enduring and incredible. And we offer top camps, goalkeeper camps and then elementary age camps and we served about ninety participants in that program as well. Um, then the big, the big docket Livingston City Pool will reopen through summer twenty twenty-three. Um, twenty twenty-two, we had a massive year, we had eight hundred and forty-two swim lessons sold. That's not individuals, but that's eight hundred and forty-two seats were taken in swim lessons. Together with our daily swim passes sold and our season swim passive uses, we saw seven thousand seven hundred and sixteen. Daily visitors utilizing lap swim, public swim and family swim, so about seven hundred, eight hundred per week visited us at the city pool. And then water aerobics is also as popular, three hundred and eighty-eight water aerobic participants, individual use, uh, throughout the summertime. And what that says to us is that it's an invaluable service, the Livingston City Pool is beloved, that outdoor pool is a wonderful space, we are grateful that we get to reopen it. We do so with about twelve to fourteen Red Cross certified lifethirts. A couple of years ago, we had the opportunity to send some of our staff over to, um, a lifeguard instructor cert, so now we train in-house. We've added the Starfish Swim Academy, uh, as an educational component to what we do and it's just added another level of professionalism, um. To the, to the pool that was already, uh, succeeding. What you see in the summer twenty twenty-three statistics there is that we've sold eighty percent of our swim lessons in two weeks. Um, that's a big number and those, the classes that are gone are early childhood swimming. So we have expanded that access point to early childhood when I had taken over with managing the pool. Uh, we serve fewer preschool classes on a daily basis and now we've expanded that. And a few years ago, we reprioritized, we have parent and top classes preschool and then it trickles off the level four. That's where we're honest about what we can serve in a ten-week set season, we do not have the capacity to develop swim team members, we have a wonderful community over the hill. But unfortunately, sometimes we have to pass you off too, um, but we encourage folks to continue their swimming desires and endeavors and become lifetime swimmers. So level four is really teaching kids what lifetime swimming is all about and exercise, swimming and making it that lifetime longevity sport for them rather than. Um, you know, getting into the co- coaching components, so our goal with that big old river next to us is to make sure that you're safe and you're able to, to survive out there. Starfish, as we begin to introduce that into the community, has some great methods and models. One being bring your kids to the pool in your clothing for one day lessons, we're tossing in with shoes on, that's two. Go through the process of what happens when I call off the boat, what happens if I'm down by the river and throwing a rock in and I slip and fall in. Um, what happens if I fall into oblivion near, near the Sagittarius Park, how do I survive and what does that feel like on my body? So we're really impressed with this starfish curriculum and we're excited to start to roll that out to the community. Sorry, I talk fast, I've obviously no. Um, our rec program highlights is the next slide, these are just a couple of new things or new order things to what we do down at the civic center in the rec department. Safe sitter classes will pass off to us from Livingston Healthcare a couple of years ago, they support the materials, so annually they purchase us the slate of materials that get to go home with the kids. And then they help us with the training of staff members, this year we've trained thirty-six safe sitters, ages eleven to fourteen, you have to be eleven to be eligible for the class. Um, this isn't a guarantee. The stamp of approval for the, uh, safe sitter card, all it is, is. The stamp of approval for the, uh, safe sitter card, all it is, is really giving the kids the tools that they need to support, the, the people that they look after, be it their siblings, um, neighborhood kiddos, or really stepping into the babysitting world. Um, we've obviously in this community seen the need for childcare. We can't win that battle right now with the staffing. But we've added Friday Night Kids Club. So once a month, you can get a night out. We have seats for twenty-five kids at twenty dollars a child, which beats a babysitting rate. We've had sixty-seven attendees in three months that we've served and the majority that show are ages five to nine. So that gives us a little bit of a mark of really who needs that evening care. Uh, the families that are receiving the service are incredibly grateful for that opportunity to get out. We've heard from a lot of new families in town that are just, I don't have ties to babysitters yet. I don't know my neighbors yet. This is an opportunity for my child to get to know you and get to know other kids their age and have a good time together. And then this year, we introduced the Spring Rate Camp. We decided to pilot that. We coupled it with an open gym for older age children. Um, there during spring break, but that particular week was incredible. We, we looked at it as an opportunity to uh, say that we can't offer a full camp and if we offer a full camp, it's going to reduce the number of people that we serve. In this chance, we had ninety seats that were filled and ended up serving thirty-three individuals. And you could pick and choose from the days that you wanted to come. Uh, it was a chance for a parent who works at home or works in an office to get a couple of hours in. As we know, it is challenging during those holiday breaks to be able to get your job done and take care of your kids all at the same time. Um, so we received a lot of positive feedback from that. We had a city Public Works and LPD and LFR themed day. So it was like the City Workers Day. And so we had all the rigs. That's a little picture. The kids are checking out the loader there. We have a fire truck in the background. Um, and it was just a really happy, wonderful space environment. And it was a place where we could take some of these trained safe sitters and we piloted them as CITs in the Spring Break Camp. And so it's utilizing the services that we train and then getting them introduced. And Kids Club does that as well and introduces them to families. So if you really liked, uh, Johnny, who is working at the camp, you're going to go home and tell your parents that Johnny was really super helpful and you'd love for Johnny to babysit you and then create that relationship there. So it's kind of a big fusion of programming that goes together. Um, special events, I know I'm taking up lots of time, but, uh, we have lots of special events. This doesn't encompass them all. The Night Owl Run is the big dog coming up in September. We took that over four years ago. We're going into the fifteenth annual. We had three hundred and fifty participants last year, fourteen supporting organizations. And we have raised in fourteen years, ninety-three thousand dollars. That money is actually, it's a nonprofit, um, organization and so separate from city funds. The city is one of the nonprofits and supporting orgs that, that receives support from this opportunity. But it's a really cool model, um, that the original nine dollars created. And it says, come and help us operate this event. It's some really great event information. Uh, come and help us operate this event and we will give you a kickback for your support. So we have Park High Cross Country, Park High Volleyball, Park High Softball. We're out there raising funds for their teams. We have links for learning Livingston Education Foundation and everybody man's a corner, helps with prep, helps with breakdown. Um, and everybody gets a little bit of goodness back into their organization. Um, it's the beloved event and you can't go wrong with that one. We had our first annual pickleball tournament this year. They were heading out. We got some sobered, so we only had twenty-four participants, but we ended up with six champions. Uh, they would like another tournament coming up here in the summer. Halloween Carnival, we've done for probably six or seven years now. A thousand attendees, that was overwhelming. Um, the reason we know that fact is it was a dollar to get in. That's a date account. Piece right there. So we had a thousand, it's sixteen supporting organizations that helped run booths of all kinds for youth organizations and inflatable, uh, concessions. Um, and just a nice opportunity to go and get your face painted and, and to dress up in costume that day. We have been passed off the holiday market from Western Sustainability Exchange. That was the, that's the indoor market at the Civic Center. And that's partnered with the Fairgrounds in their Christmas Craft Fair. And we do it intentionally on the same weekend, so you can shop both events. We saw over a thousand attendees and thirty local vendors serving, uh, selling their wares. And they all profess to me, I can't guarantee it, but they did very well that weekend. Santa's Village is morphed a couple of times. We did breakfast with Santa. Um, flipping that many pancakes is a challenge. Um, so what we did in learning from our Halloween Carnival is that we reduced it to a certain number of spaces that we could serve. So we sold a hundred spaces or individual spots for ten dollars apiece. And you could come and do all these craft stations, have a little private, uh, meeting that you'll see in the upper corner there, that's some of our elf staff that helped. Uh, including myself with Santa and it kind of calms the holiday down and that was appreciated, that direction we went. And we had twenty volunteers, including safe sitters at Santa's Village. Roller skating is a community favorite. Um, easy, that one, uh, rules. We, we had nine winter Friday nights this, uh, winter, thanks to the Way School. They gratefully help us with, uh, skate maintenance and they serve concessions. And then we manned the door and the safety and we saw over thirteen hundred roller skaters this winter on Friday nights. And then our partners with Livingston Fire Rescue, we jumped into the Easter egg hunt business with them. Uh, we have a pretty fun model there with plastic eggs now that get recycled and you get a little flower planting kit at the end and some goodies to take home for your kids. And then that's a wonderful, uh, accessible. Accessible event. This big sheet is just a lot of people that make this happen and, and make it work for us. So, um, this is for your knowledge and it'll be in the record, but we couldn't do anything without our supporting agencies and sponsors. The highlighted sponsors above the smaller labeled sponsors are banner or annual sponsors for the rec department. So we see about fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars annually that supports us with things like the Easter egg hunt. Buying lots of little Easter eggs or trinkets. Um, buying seeds to plant, uh, on Easter. Buying new roller skates for skate night. All of those things cost a lot of money. And so outside of the city budget. Uh, we are grateful for the group on the right for their cash donations. And then to the partners on the left, we couldn't do an ounce of what we do without that. Um, I would like to give a shout out to Expedition Church as we are entering pool season, that they are inside reconstructing the pool house for us and helping us paint and refresh it to get it ready for the season. And the amount of work and the skilled labor they've brought to the table is unbelievable and would have been an exponential cost to all of us. So, um, we are very thankful for them and all the partners that stood there on our sheet. And then the last slide, sorry for so much time. This is the Livingston Recreation Team. There are three of us that run all of this programming. Um, and run all of this coordination and that doesn't even touch on parks use and additional special events and Civic Center rentals and birthday parties and so on. Um, so I've been with the city for nine years and the recreation manager for most of that. I have a degree in community recreation from CSU Chico. I don't need to spell out that acronym for us, Montanans. Um, Adam has been with us for six years. He started as a seasonal lifeguard when he was fifteen and he's grown with us. Um, he's there in the middle. That's me on the left at Suzie's wedding last weekend with him. He is now our pool manager and then he helps run sports program coordinator. So he is the one that dialed the phone number when we had to cancel. Uh, T-ball just there with that lightning strike outside. And then Suzie is brand new with us. She's been with us for a year. She's finishing her degree in rec administration. And she's our community recreation coordinator. And then throughout the season, we have some seasonal hires. We have some teenagers that help us out with birthday party coverage and extra event staff. Um, and then obviously in the pool, like we said, we amp up that staffing plan as well.
Benny, Dinger, can we ask her questions?
I was gonna say, is that all that's going on?
That was just a highlight.
Do you folks have questions or things?
Just the first year you've had this.
First year I've done the update, yes, no.
Was this fantastic?
Thank you. Happy to do it.
Go keep up, man. Incredible what you do. You got all three of you. I mean, we're blessed.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, ask and you shall receive. We asked for an update. Thank you so much.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I'm, we know each other, so I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, I wanted to ask you. I took notes, see while you were talking. I wanted to ask you, when did the football? Like the.
Football program?
Yeah, I remember it was.
We're three years in, so we're just closing out our first grant cycle with them, um, with the Falcons. So we grew from about eighty, low nineties. And so we've had a little incremental. If we got to first and second grade, we'd probably double what we've got, so.
So how long do you think it will be before it starts, um?
Oh, starts affecting.
It seems like, yeah, like you already mentioned, it's an.
No, the, the eighth graders, the incoming ninth graders will be the first generation um, of our initial program. Cause there's mainly fifth graders that year, so.
That'll be fun.
Yeah, it's, it'll, uh, we hope to see that, that benefit. Um, and then see what we can do. That's an incredible, um, relationship with Park High School and Sleeping Giant Middle School. Um, another one, just highlight on mentorship because it's all about crossing multi-generational. Or you think it's for one group, but it's really for the other groups. So, uh, this year with youth basketball. In third and fourth grade, we separated the boys and girls. Previously it was co-ed. We saw higher numbers on both sides by doing that. And then we talked to the Park High School basketball coaches and we were able, JV was wrapping up their season. So we had girls assigned to our little girls teams as mentors and coaches. And I was of course a coach of one of those groups and my daughter was on that, one of the teams. And just incredible how excited the kids were to, um, to build that relationship. So anytime, obviously we can intermix generations is, is even a greater benefit than the service we're providing.
Um, thank you.
Yeah.
And I was going to ask you, what does CIT stand for? You were talking.
Oh, a counselor in training. So, yeah, a little soon to be. And, um, we need to bring back it just candidly, junior, our junior aquatics program. Because the existing lifeguards, we ran that for several years, but then with COVID, we just didn't recoup that program at the time. But we generated so many lifeguards out of encouraging them to come in at a younger age and support the pool in its capacity. And then, um, and then move into the, the full, the full steam that, that they're in, they're keeping, they're familiar with, uh, the pool setting. And so our current lifeguards benefited from that program. We're living a gap right now, but hopefully we'll be able to bring that back.
I just want to thank you so much for taking time. Um, I wish that we've been getting this forever since I'd been on the commission. And so I'm glad it started and I hope we can keep it going. Your work is super meaningful to our community.
Thank you.
Your, your department and you in particular are a person that I get positive feedback about. So I want to thank you for everything you do for the people of Livingston. Um, and I know you do a lot more than what's in here. I remember when COVID came and our kids were scared.
Yeah.
And I know you did special things.
Yeah.
Um, to help our community and I just really want to thank you. It's very meaningful.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just going to say thank you for this. This is super exciting and it's great to see all this and taking the time to do it now. I know you're headed into your busy season, so thank you for sharing, but I think it's really important for everybody who maybe didn't know what was going on, to know what was going on. Um, and so I think that that's really incredible. And I do, with Melissa, hear good things about you all the time. I don't have a little one, so I don't uh, participate quite as much, but I do have friends that get a lot of, out of your wiggle Wednesdays and some of those other things. So, uh, thank you.
Awesome. Well, there's softball coming up. Free agent sign-ups, you don't have to be an all-star like I said.
And can you teach us how to play pickleball?
Yeah. That's where we should have the party is, we should do a pickleball party. Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's a little ball party. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really appreciate your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Um, are we ready? Is there anything else? Do you want to close that item out? Are we good?
I am good.
Okay, commissioners, I would suggest the next two things on the agenda are, um, the Shane Center Pavilion topic. So I think now is a good time for a break rather than interrupting five minutes in. Do I have a motion for a ten-minute break?
I'll move to adjourn for ten.
Second up, two motion by Schwartz and a second by Phil for a ten-minute break. All in favor, raise your hands. Say aye. Okay, five, oh, we're going to take a break. Thank you for putting this timer up and see you shortly. So back to our agenda, um, we are we are doing action item A first. So it's ten A. If you're following along, it's page one seventy of the agenda. Um, and we're going to roll in, get the scheduled, excuse me. That's good. Okay, so we're going to do ten A and then we're going to roll in sixty, the scheduled public comment for the Shane Center Pavilion presentation into this. Um, just so it flows better. I think there was an error in the agenda and the intention was to have it all as one item. So this is fixing that. Commissioners, you'll notice that we have some printouts. Um, don't worry about them right now. I believe that when we need be noticing these, that staff will guide us to the documents that are in front of us. Is there anything you can add before I? Okay. All right, so we'll begin with, um, action item A. Discuss approved deny special exemption permit request from the Shane Mulaney Center, Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Noots. The item before you is a special exception request pursuant to the Livingston Municipal Code. And we are here today because the, uh, when the city sold the property in two thousand and nine, the, um, the purchase and sale agreement, uh, required the city to, um, rezone that part of the block that we're on, backside of the block into the central business district. And so the city did that as part of the transfer. At that time, uh, as you may recall from our meeting several weeks ago, um, that there are certain uses uh, that exist within the central business district that are not reflected in the use, the list of uses, um, in section thirty-four of the Livingston Municipal Code. And, um, uh, amongst those uses that we are seeking to add later tonight are theater um, and also open-air stadium, sports arenas and amphitheaters. And, and so, uh, as it stands today and as it has stood since two thousand and nine, when we transferred the property. Um, uh, neither a theater nor an open-air stadium, sports arena or amphitheater isn't allowed use within the central business district. And so, uh, the Livingston Municipal Code establishes a process for, uh, uses that are not specifically included in the list of uses to be contemplated by the city commission. And that is section thirty point seventy-five. And so we are here tonight um, because the, the Shane Center has, um, requested a, uh, an expansion of their, um, facility. And the expansion of the facility was not contemplated by the original purchase and sale agreements and is also not specifically allowed, uh, within the list of uses in the Livingston Municipal. So therefore the, the special exception review processes before us. And, uh, the application is included in your packets. And before we hear from the applicants, I would, uh, introduce Jen Severson, our planning director, who will run through, um, several uh, conditions that she was recommending, um, if, uh, uh, if this is approved uh, by the commission. And I will note, um, for clarity that, um, before you folks, and then we will put it on the screen for everyone here in the list. See as well, um, we have, uh, provided you, uh, a printed list of those exceptions. Um, and, and you'll note that we have added, um, excuse me, a printed list of those conditions. And you'll know we have added several, um, that are, that are highlighted in yellow on the paper before you. And again, those will be, um, we'll put on the screen here. Um, so I would introduce Jen Severson to, uh, discuss the, the conditions that, that she is recommending um, for this project, Christine, Jen.
I just, one canny processing for the commissioners. I just want to make sure if you have questions, you're just tracking your questions and we'll get through all the presentations and then we can ask questions after everyone's done sharing with us. Does that work for the commission? Sorry to interrupt.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm trying with this really quick. Um, as, uh, Senator Gager said, this is for a special exception permit review. Um, since the use of, um, the outdoor, um, stadiums or amphitheaters, um, that later tonight, through the second reading, may be approved. That's the list of uses we, uh, printed for you. Um, this use within the central business district zoning district is, um, allowed through a special exception from review. So. I see it on here, but it's not clear.
Yeah, no.
Um, so, um, this is a rendering that was included in the application packet. Um, of what the outdoor pavilion, uh, we can see what we look like. Um, the structure is, is pretty on point with the information, the building plans they provided in the application packet. Again, this is for an outdoor pavilion on the west side, um, of the existing building for the Shane Mulaney Cultural Center. And we go to the next slide. Um, this is just a brief summary for proposal. I tried to get the key points. And go to the next slide. Um, this is just a brief summary for proposal. I tried to get the key points. Um. So, um. For that one summary. Um. Sorry. Um, so for section thirty seventy-five and our zoning code, it covers sort of um the special exception permits, the review criteria, and also the uh, city commission action based on uh, staff's review and recommendations for that review. Um, just a reminder, the review criteria for a special exception permit, pretty broad. Um, the proposed use will not produce a potential adverse effect upon nearby properties or their occupants. Um, another criteria is that the proposed use is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the city zoning ordinance. Um, and if desired, the city commission may add such requirements as it deems necessary to protect the surrounding neighborhood from the effects of the granted special exception. Um, and then as far as city commission action, uh, that is um possible uh, based on the review and staff's recommendation. Um, the city commission may uh, deny the application for the special, special exception permit. Uh, may grant the application for the special exception permit. Delay action on the application for appearing not to exceed thirty days. Will grant the application for the special exception permit with special conditions and safeguards. So uh, for summary of the proposal, again, try to hit the main points. Uh, this is a new outdoor covered pavilion um, on the west side, uh, where there's currently a parking lot of Shane Center. Three is an outdoor event venue. It will not be in use uh, for the applicant's application materials at the same time as the Dulce Theater, which is the indoor theater for the Shane Center. Um, the maximum event capacity proposed is nine hundred and ninety-nine people. Uh, the pavilion will only be open for events May through September, so the warmer weather. It is open um, on two sides. Um, one of the sides also can be partially open to kind of let airflow through. Um, and just for those of you, um, because I just realized I didn't put a site plan at the beginning. This is in the same area where they, they have had some outdoor events um since COVID sort of came around. Um, parking will be available in the pavilion when it is not in use for events. So um, between October and April, but also during the months when it's used for events, when it's not in use, there will be parking available under the cover of the pavilion. Um, the minimum required parking on site to be associated with the pavilion use is forty spaces. Um. Per the code, um, I have a, a slide later if you'd like to see kind of breaking out how that was determined. Um, the applicant is proposing, I believe, fifteen spaces total. So they're exceeding that minimum parking requirement on site. Um, table thirty forty, that use table that you've been handed out, um, this confirms that the open air stadiums, sports arena, amphitheater use um, that is allowed in the central business district where this property is located um, by a special exception. Hmm, um. So it is not what we would consider a by right use, automatic. Um, we're sure those A's on the table, but it is allowed based on your consideration of the application materials it granted as a special exception permit. Um, another thing the applicant has included in their proposal is they will have a maximum of ten events uh, each year. So in that five month, four month period, um, that will end between eight and ten PM. So after eight PM. Um, but, but by ten PM, um, other events that will have other events, they haven't explicitly laid out every event. Um. But um, that will end by eight. So there's a handful that will, they are proposing to have, they'll be on that time. Um, so just a brief overview of staff's recommendations on top of the things that are the part of the record of the application that the Shane Center provided. Um. Staff is recommending that um emergency access be maintained at all times. So like a twenty foot fire lane, uh, there's a southern parking lot and an, and an urban parking lots. Um, and that, that fire rescue uh, emergency vehicles will be able to get through at all times. Um, so no, no trickling out of, of patrons, no seating, putting up lawn chairs in the parking lot. That all has to be contained in the pavilion. Um, also for events, more than three hundred people, staff is recommending that um, police and EMS be required to be on site for those events. Um. We're uh, recommending that a traffic circulation plan be required. This is gonna look at vehicle, bikes and pedestrians as well as ADA access. They can sure all of that has been considered and identify how everything's gonna work within the property when these events are in place, when they're not in place also. So when the pavilion is open for parking and drive-through traffic and then how traffic flows from E Street, the entry points to D Street, the exit points. I'm just to kind of make sure everything is, is gonna flow. Well, um, for the E Street access, they are proposing a new southern access. Um, so they have that main parking lot on the south side of the building and, and where the pavilion's gonna be. They are proposing to add an access point on D Street. Um. And we are recommending that that be a right turn only exit. Not just when events are going on, but it is fairly close to that intersection with Lewis Street. And this way, all traffic will be required to turn right so that it's not gonna turn left. Create some conflicts with pedestrians crossing the street, with cars turning right from Lewis Street, and especially when there's events, people queuing up to get out of the parking lot once it's over. Um, also recommending additional bike parking is required during large events. Um. Uh, they do have onsite, the minimum bike parking requirements are exceeded. They have a total of six um, bike parking spaces and plus an additional two spaces that accommodate bikes with carriages on the back. And but we're recommending more for larger events. Um, we're recommending that a drainage plan be provided to us before a building permit is issued, just to demonstrate that um, between the new pavilion roof. And they're also covering the, that side patio, um, kind of on the side of face. Um. It's all already in previous area, but just because it's kind of kind of um concentrate, I guess, um, in, in like heavy damp or something like that. We just want to make sure that it's being routed where it's going to. It's not gonna be driven into the street and to right away onto, um, you know, in the interior of the parking lot, that kind of thing. We just want to know where it's going. Um. And then finally, um, we're recommending a condition that trash and debris be removed from the property and adjacent sidewalks within two hours after any events in the pavilion. Um. So that's kind of the general recommendation of approval with conditions. And I'm happy to also take questions unless you want to go up any of the others.
No, I, I think we'll stand for questions if, if the commission has any at this point. And if there's no questions at this point, then.
I think it'd be my preference if we hear the next part from the folks at the Shane Center and then we can ask all of our questions. Does that work for commissioners?
For me.
Does that work for you, Mr. Gager? Okay, so, uh, Mr. Gager, what's next?
Uh, well, I would ask the applicants, uh, if they would like to present on the project.
Uh, good evening. My name is Erica Adams and I'm the executive director at the Shane Maloney Center for the Arts. We really appreciate the commission's time and consideration for our special exception permit. Uh, and want to thank the city's department for their referral comments, uh, as well as Jennifer for all her diligence regarding our important project. Um, if you.
They're just making it so folks um, that are attending remotely can see. Thanks for your patience, Erica. Technology.
Yeah, no worries. If you wouldn't mind advancing to the next slide. Over? Okay. Do you want to go back one?
Yeah.
So our mission uh, at the Shane Maloney Center for the Arts is to strengthen community through participation in the arts. Our organization accomplishes this through producing arts programming, educational opportunities and by hosting community events. Uh, the repurposing uh, and renovation of the East Side School into the Shane Center uh, represented an unprecedented community collaboration between the city of Livingston and a nonprofit. We are grateful for the city's past support and tonight we hope that you will grant our uh, application so that we can continue to fulfill our mission, keep pace with the exciting growth uh of the, the community and provide a public gathering space that will help build a stronger community. So now we are at that slide. In spring of two thousand and twenty, the Shane Center closed its doors due to COVID. The pandemic made us reimagine how we would fulfill our mission, bringing diverse groups of people together while maintaining public safety. Uh, if you wouldn't mind advancing, when things started to open up again, we pivoted our programming to expand the number of events that we hosted outdoors. We tested this idea two years ago by launching concerts in the courtyard. Strong communities' participation showed us that it was significant demand for live events in a place where people could gather and connect safely. Mind advancing. In summer of two thousand and twenty-two, the concerts evolved and became the Free Summer Outdoor Concert Series. Presented our new portable stage in the parking lot. Over seven concerts, we saw more than twenty-two hundred community members attend. We also moved our flagship education program, the Young Actors Workshop, in August outside. However, uh, providing events in the parking lot comes with a few challenges, if you wouldn't mind advancing. Uh, such as afternoon showers, August temperatures on asphalt and our town's important wind. We knew that we could do better than the beautiful plywood structure that we erected and a portable uh, stage and Hooverville style tent city to provide protection from the elements. We realized that we had the opportunity to invest in the creation of a permanent outdoor pavilion that we could all take pride in as a community. This project is in line with the city of Livingston's growth policy to support and enhance the arts and cultural facilities. Strengthen and diversify Livingston's economy and provide a public venue for community events. We intend to use this space to execute our mission by facilitating our existing outdoor programming as well as provide other nonprofits and community organizations a resource for their events. Additional possible community uses may include an insane command center. Our con- close proximity to the city county building makes it an ideal staging ground to uh, for regional emergency response gatherings. Also potentially a backup venue for outdoor events, uh, encountering weather or possibly even a venue for Park High School's commencement. You know, kind of advancing. Our architect for this project, Lucas Shad, with LPS Architecture, drew inspiration from the existing brick school building and the historic origins as of Livingston as a train town. The arch roof is classic rail station form that helps decrease the profile of the structure from the street. The low brick walls and movable glass panels on the D Street side will help control wind, noise and crowd management. Livingston Municipal Code states that the special exception permit shall be granted by this lady commission if they find it meets the following provisions, as Jennifer outlined. The use of this space as a seasonal event venue is something that our neighbors are already accustomed to and have embraced. Want to advance? We've been hosting our annual Spotlight Gala outside for the past seven years. We also have hosted performances outside such as Forever Plaid and the Dueling Pianos. Mind advancing. Um, and then finally, in addition, uh, for the past decade, the Shane Center is partnered with Montana Shakespeare and the Parks to provide a local presentation to the Livingston community in our parking lot. To date, our experience with outdoor events demonstrate that our traffic impacts are considerably less than the trip generation number provided on our application we predict. Due to high pedestrian and bicycle usage as well as our close proximity to the downtown area. In addition, the Shane Center will encourage these travel, oh, sorry, we're not there. No worries. Uh. Encourage uh, these travel modes by investing in increased bike parking, marketing and signage. We'll work with city officials and Sanderson Stewart's professional traffic operations engineer to develop an internal traffic circulation plan. And utilize a shared parking agreement with Lincoln School located less than two blocks away to provide an additional forty-six off-street parking spaces, which will exceed the requirements of the Livingston Municipal Code by fifty-five spaces. Also, our organization has reached yeah, no worries. I have reached out to the neighborhood. We identified a hundred and seventeen properties in our area. If you can go back one slide, thank you. Uh, delivering handwritten invitations to those homes for an information session we hosted on April twenty-sixth. Picture there are some of the comments and questions that were brought up and addressed. And we've received resounding support from the project as demonstrated by now, more than sixty letters of support. If we can advance, um, section two says that the proposed use is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance. I just like to point out that in two thousand and nine, when the property currently occupied by the Shane Center was rezoned from neighborhood commercial to central business district in the ordinance number twenty fifteen, this expressly rezoned the premise with the intent to develop in accordance with its mission statement, the strength in community through participation in the arts, a performing arts center at the location of the old East Side School. The proposed use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance as cultural centers are listed in the CBD's narrative description in section thirty thirty. The Shane Maloney Center for the Arts serves our community as a cultural center by providing access to the arts. And the pavilion is an extension of that current use as a cultural center consistent with our mission statement. For the third point, under thirty seventy-five, uh, the Shane Center intends to fully address all conditions of approval as directed by the city commission. We will further condition the space by not hosting any event in the pavilion that overlaps with events in the theater. Um, and vice versa, this way not creating unduly increased traffic or parking requirements. We'll utilize the previous mentioned uh, shared parking agreement that you received uh, with the Lincoln School providing the additional forty-six off-street parking spaces. And not host more event, more than ten events per year that will have sound anticipation after eight PM. And of course, strictly adhere to Livingston Municipal Code uh, ten point five regarding prohibited noises after ten PM to be respectful for the neighboring properties. Once again, I'd really like to thank the administrative staff for their diligence and thoroughness. And we hope that our application demonstrates the Shane Center's commitment to enriching our community. The pavilion as an extension of our current use will not adversely affect the neighborhood, but enhances character and further the goals of the city of Livingston's growth policy, serving our community and future generations with family-friendly gatherings, socialization and engagement in the arts. Thank you for your time and consideration and at the appropriate time, we'd be happy to answer any further questions.
This is a clappy crowd. I'm not mad at that. I'm not mad that everybody's celebrating each other and he'll write it. Um. Mr. Gager, did you want to say anything else or you go to the, moving to the mission now?
You may proceed.
Okay. So commissioners, um, hopefully you all were taking notes on questions. What we're gonna do next is we'll ask clarifying questions. And then we'll move to um, a motion and then public comment. And then we'll come back to the commission to deliberate and discuss and potentially ask more questions. So um, who would like to begin?
This is clarifying question.
Yes.
Um, I will just.
I'll direct everything to Mr. Gager and then he can he can help navigate the.
I just want to say this is a very well put together application. My clarifying comment. I move from there.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz.
And one, one question from Mr. Gager, however, maybe it is. If, and maybe I the great application, there's a lot of information here, so I might have missed something. So that's what I'm asking. I've seen a couple of like I, on Jen's slide, we saw nine hundred and ninety-nine people are what would fit in that. we saw 999 people are what would fit in that pavilion. I'm curious to know if that's what the Shane Center is suggesting that they will allow in that, or will they advertise that as a less? I'd like to know, like, what their thoughts are on that. That is clear enough.
Yeah. Excellent question, and I will not pretend to know the answer to the Shane Center's plans, and so I'd invite Erica to discuss the question.
Absolutely. So regarding, we have stated in our application that we were, is presenting a design occupancy for a maximum of 999 people, which I'd like to point out is reduced from the square footage that the structure would allow by code. We have no events that we previously hosted that have had a greater attendance at 460 people, and we currently don't have any events scheduled or planned that would exceed, greatly exceed the 460 number. We were asked this question yesterday, and I do not have the authority to alter the occupancy submitted on our application without approval from our board of directors. So as of right now, we are proceeding with this stated maximum occupancy, but remain eager to discuss the project further to meet all reasonable conditions that the city commission puts forth and working with staff so that we can provide a community resource.
Okay, thank you. Really, my only question.
My only question, yeah. Okay, well, I have a follow-up question on that one, and I have a few other questions. So I'll direct to you, Mr. Gager, and then you can help. So it sounds like the size of the structure allows for greater than 999 people. Do we know if that takes into account the plan that we expect to see from staff that would allow for emergency access, fire, police, the ADA walkways that Jen was talking about, et cetera?
We don't know at this point if that number takes into account those conditions.
Okay, so that, those conversations between staff and the Shane haven't happened yet to account for, like, all of the things that were potential conditions?
Well, the layouts, one of the conditions included in the staff report is prior to issuance of building permit is that we would have to see layouts that would ensure that we have emergency access. And so the condition is intended to make sure the city has that information, but not necessarily at this point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so it sounds like that number would be subjected to more, more conditions than like the staff reviewing it for safety and emergencies. Okay. So it sounds like the maximum event so far has been 460 people, but typically, it looks like from the numbers between Gala and the ticketed events and Shakespeare in the Park that it's probably averaging somewhere around 200? Is that your understanding?
I would defer to the applicant then.
Each event has slightly different metrics. Montana Shakespeare in the Parks is definitely another higher threshold. In addition, the Young Actors Works, when we've had like 150 youth participants on utilizing the space, and that just varies year to year based on participation. But I would say on average, between 100 or 200, that highest use.
460. Okay, thank you. There were a lot of numbers, so I'm just trying to get clarity. Like, I read the whole packet, and I, yeah, I had to reread it like three or four times this section.
Absolutely.
And I still have a rise. Please don't test me, because I will not pass that test. But I the other question I have for you is so there's this conversation happening about the initial use of the property, the intent of the property upon zoning or rezoning. I haven't read all the minutes of all those meetings. Do you have an understanding of, like, the intention of this property when the city went into an agreement with the Shane Center?
Yes, actually, the, when the city transferred the property, they actually had received proposals on the use of the building, and with this Crazy Mountain Productions was the applicant's submitted proposal at that time. And included in their proposal was a multi-phase update, upgrade to the facilities there. And it, the future that was presented by Crazy Mountain Productions at the time of sale or transfer was, was different than what is presented today. An outdoor pavilion was not contemplated within that document. There was expansion in theater space, there was creation of parking spaces. And like I said, it was a multi-phase process, but it was different than what was being presented.
Okay. Okay, so my next question is, it sounds like the Shane Center has been doing events here. Do we have a sense of how many went past 8:00 p.m. of these? I can't tell from, I'm guessing the ticketed events that were named. There's two of them, like Dueling Pianos and the People on Flails or Plaid. I don't remember their name of their band, but do we know how many of those were, like, past 8:00 p.m. events?
You know, because I was not here, I defer to the applicant.
Absolutely. So there, the annual Spotlight Gala that occurs the third Saturday in August goes past 8:00 p.m. The Forever Plaid, which was two weekends of performances, went past 8:00 p.m. And, but ended before 10:00, as well as Montana Shakespeare in the Parks. That one starts at 6:30 p.m., and so goes past 8:00 p.m. So we've had three, but prior to those, did send out a survey, as well as beer charting, it was a questionnaire asking, letting them know about our community events and asking them their feedback.
This is pretty obscure question. I won't be surprised if the answer's no. Any chance somebody was taking soft readings for decibels at the property line when these events are happening?
Not, to the best of my knowledge, city staff did not.
Or, or folks, the researcher is very much showing up in me right now. Do you have a, do you have a sense of, like, the decibel level? That's okay if you don't, I, that's like I said, it's obscure.
I'm sorry.
No, not everybody has an app on their phone like me.
Right.
I know. I'll own it, I'm not embarrassed. So the, so the events inside, it sounds like the Dulce Theater will be closed during the time that a pavilion event would happen. But what about, like, the movement room and the ballroom?
Absolutely, so we did not, I would refer to Colin Tippett with LGS Architecture regarding the code analysis, if that's okay. Perfect.
As a consultant, I work for LGS Architecture. I did the code analysis on the project. I do not believe that we've limited the use of the occupancy of anything besides the actual Dulce Theater, so Phase Cafe, the banquet hall, that can still be used while the
When you say banquet hall, do you mean the ballroom? Or has trained me to use those words last, okay?
Yes.
So that, that, do you remember the occupancy of that room? The ballroom or the banquet room?
I do have it here. It could hold 127 occupants at code capacity.
What about the movement room?
Which one's the movement room?
It's upstairs above it. We go up the stairs, and it's like, sort of right in front.
And 125. Okay.
It's the place where we have medium-sized community events? It's like right up the stairs, you know, you kind of go around, and you jog, and you it's a
I don't have that one specifically called out, but I know that the rest of the occupancies inside the building are 62 and, for the rest of the building, and then 49 for Phase Cafe.
So Phase is 49. And then you said the rest of the building is 62, and is that, I can't remember the name of the room where we met Grant Gager for the first time. It's the very far right upstairs, I think it's the rehearsal
Page 210 to 11, and you'll find the occupancy.
Can you say that again?
Page 210 and 211.
Okay.
Theater, banquet hall.
Yeah, those are right.
All the I didn't see what's there. I think it would be the pavilion, I think.
So the pavilion is outside, and that's 999. And then everyday business assembly is that, okay, that's the cafe, is at 49. The offices are 62. The theater, which is the Dulce Theater, is that right? 840?
That is 185. 25, this is a funny calculation, which you have to do all the spaces associated with the theater, and so it's like the assembly hall outside with concessions, and all of these are associated uses of the Dolce Theater that would be shut down.
So it's actually 185, not 840? Right? Am I following? It's fine.
There's 185 big seats, which is
Right.
165 big seats with the addition of plenty of dead metal seats. That is how the code regulates seating in the theater. That does not include this performance space on the stage or the additional support facilities of the scene drop, dressing room.
Thank you. And then, and then the banquet hall or the ballroom is the 127. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz, also. Like I said, we miss things in here, please. I think that's helpful. I'm just trying to get a sense of what's still open and what the occupancy is, since all that comes into play with a potential pavilion, and it started at 999. That is all the questions I have right now. I'm sure commissioners will have more. Yeah, are you guys good for now? Okay. So, um, the next thing on our agenda, before we can open a public comment, we have to have a motion. I want to get clarity on the motion and what conditions it approves. Or what, I'm sorry, what conditions it includes, if any. We have one in the packet, and we have an updated one that was shared online tonight, and that each commissioner has a copy of. Mr. Gager, can you walk us through, like, the best way to make a motion, depending on what the commission wants to do?
Absolutely. So I would use the updated document that was distributed, and then we will share on the screen as the, it's titled Revised Conditions of Approval. And I would use that if the commission is inclined to accept the staff recommendations. A simple motion to approve the project with the conditions as presented by staff would suffice if the commission desires to change the, the conditions of approval, either by adding or subtracting. Please reference the, the conditions as presented, and when we do so.
Okay, I think that it might be cleanest to do, if folks, if the commission wants to do with conditions amended by staff for the original motion, opening up to public comment, giving the commission time to deliberate. If we want to change any of the conditions or add conditions, then we can just amend the motion. Does that make sense? Otherwise, we're amending the conditions before we talk about it. Does that work for the commission?
Yeah.
I mean, you can't do stuff before we talk about it, but I'm going to need to start talking first. Okay, so who, who wants to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve special exception permit for the proposed pavilion to be used by the Shane Lulani Center for the Arts as an outdoor venue.
Do you want to go with the conditions amended by staff?
With revised conditions of approval recommended by staff.
For a second, that. Okay, I need to write this down, just a second. With conditions revised, amended of approved, can you help me remember what you said?
With revised conditions of approval recommended by staff.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion by Schwartz, and a second by Kail, and I wrote it down, I'll read it back later. Now we'll go to public comment. So we'll start with folks in the room. People that want to give comment on this special exemption permit request.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Gavin Clark. I live at 215 South C Street. I'm just right down the block from the Shane Center, and I'm here to speak overwhelmingly in favor of this project. As a neighbor, the Shane Center has always been the best neighbor in the neighborhood by far. I am continually impressed with their work in the community, with their youth. And every time I walk out of a show at the Shane Center, I'm so grateful for their work in, in supporting our community. Also, as a, as the executive director of the Park County Community Foundation, we have been a major supporter, on our terms, of the Shane Center, major for the community foundation. And, and we look forward to supporting the Shane Center well into the future. And an event like, a center like this, and a pavilion will not only benefit our, our neighborhood and our community and our city, but I also see it as a, as a great value add for our nonprofit sector. We are continually looking for different spaces and different opportunities to host events. And so I couldn't be more in favor of this project from that perspective. And then additionally, as nonprofits and the needs of our community continue to grow, I think it's always really fantastic for nonprofits to think of revenue generation outside of individual philanthropy. And this, although I don't know the numbers, I would imagine there's some sort of revenue generation component here. And anything that supports the Shane Center and the great work that they do is, is a huge yes in my book. So thank you for all your time, and thank you, Erica, and your team for everything that you do for our community.
Thanks, Gavin. Who else would like to give a comment? Hi, James.
All right, James, I want to make some of that down the street, down the line. 13 years ago, I think it was 13 years ago, we were in this room discussing the Shane Center and its original permit for construction. And I spoke saying that I overwhelmingly support it. I still do. I think it's a wonderful addition to our city, but now they're in the block. Go to all kinds of shows. I really like everything that they've done. I do have one concern, probably a small one, is that I see that there are, what, 10, I think, concerts that go past 8? But I don't see any number that go up to 8. Like, are we going to do this every night of the week? Are we going to do this all blocks? Is this going to be a constant, long-term, summertime? Every night of the week, everything's going until 8, and then sometimes it might go till 10. That's my only concern with this whole project is that there is some way to pump the brakes a little bit on too much. Yeah, with that, you know, everybody does a great job over there, so we're happy with their work. I do.
Thanks, James.
I didn't get to
Can you repeat it for?
Yeah, you got to talk louder when they get there.
So I am going to ask everybody, when you're at the podium, just to really speak up for us, because some of us back here can't hear quite as well. And I'm going to just
We're going to pause, make sure Commissioner Friedman, so
So what he was saying all over, that he was concerned that they would be having events every night, all summer long, up until 8 o'clock. So is there a way to know how many events they might have throughout the summer?
Interesting.
Okay. Be ready.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Lisa Mayer, and I live at 324 Bus Geyser Street here in Livingston. I'm the proud mom of a Shane Center kid. My son's been involved with the Shane since he was five years old. He's 14 now. If you saw Um, if you saw Matilda or Music Man, he's in both of those this year. Um, he got a spot in the Blue Slipper Theater because of his connections with the Shane Center. Um, and even has further opportunity to participate in the arts because of the groundwork that the Shane Center has created for him. Um, it's such a positive place for our kids to be and grow. I'm also your chief juvenile probation officer. Um, here in Livingston, Park Street, Grass County, most of the water robotics instructor, so you know. But I can tell you that, um, I don't see kids at the Shane Center getting in trouble with the law or law enforcement, the police. Department, that it's a positive place for kids to grow and learn and I'm excited to develop that property and make it outstanding for everybody, for the arts. Certainly for the kids. I love the idea of the kids eating lunch under it during Young Actors Workshop. They're always out there in the. Sun, treating there, which is fine, but it'd be nice if they had a little place to huddle up and, um. I just am in super supportive of this opportunity for the Shane to grow and build its, its structure and I think it's a beautiful addition to the arts and our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You never need to apologize to the commission for giving comment.
Uh, my name is Ben Johnson. I live at three-two-four West Geyser. I'm my mom's son. And I would like to talk about how the Shane Center has affected my life. Um, when I was younger, I was starting over the lessons with Jim Connolly for, uh, ukulele and piano. Um, shortly after I started, we switched over to the Shane Center after doing locations. But after that, I, uh, first started my, with the theater in, uh, Mary Poppins, which was my first, uh, play that I ever did. And after that, I, I participated in six different, uh, Young Actors Workshops. And then that led me into doing community plays and then working at the Blue Slipper. But, um, I would just like to say that nothing has affected me more, like what I would like to do when I grow up, what I want to be than the community. For the theater here in Livingston and everybody who works here and it. In the Shane is amazing for our town and, uh, it's just, it's great that we get to have this for the kids and everybody.
Thank you so much, Ben.
Yeah.
Who wants to follow that?
I look so with booze.
Hey, um, my name is Hunter Beers. I live on seventeen Apollustus Circle. And, um, I first moved here about a year and a half and I moved back actually the year before that. And it was a little hard getting in the community, so I decided that I would, you know, try the Young Actors Workshop at, uh. Shane Center and it went really well, um. I got to do something that I enjoyed and I got to strengthen relationships with people and it really got me into the community. And I have done, I've been on actors workshop since that. I've done the community play and I did their DTI program, which is a little bit. About just having kids express themselves through music and. You know, places, stuff like that and, um. Yeah, I can recall back in August for the Summer Young Actors Workshop, how hot it was outside. You know, it is. And, uh, you're actually better focus on the cereal sometimes because it's how hot it was and, uh. You know, everybody seeking shade, so I think it'd be nice if I got the billion out. And I think it offered a lot of opportunities for the Shane Center. And kind of gave a fresh new experience for people that have been seeing stuff at the Shane Center for a long time. And. Yeah, so I, I, I love the Shane Center. It's great. Uh, people out here are amazing and, um. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Hunter. I just want to make sure people are signing. I keep forgetting to say it. Did folks make sure to sign their name on the? If not, you can do it before you leave too.
Yeah.
Don't worry. Yep, I just want to make sure before we leave, so we get your name right in the minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Xander Beckel and I live on one-one-one-three Prairie Drive. Um, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about my experiences with the Shane Center. Uh, I've been going to the Shane Center ever since I was in third grade. Um, I started by taking guitar lessons at Conley's Books and Music, which I still do. This day, I've also begun taking voice lessons with, um, Clayton Overwell, who also occupies the space at the Shane Center. Um, in the third grade, I attended my first Young Actors Workshop, which I thoroughly enjoyed. Being able to perform in front of people and my family was a truly eye-opening experience and ever since I wanted to be in front of a crowd performing. Uh, I've attended at least two additional Young Actors Workshops since and I plan on joining again for their newest production. I've enjoyed being involved in a few of the Shane Centers' community plays as well. Being a part of the plays lets you be around people and. Really connect and make new friendships. I love to sing and perform, so being involved with the Shane Center has definitely helped me be more, uh, confident on stage. There's so many things to do around town during summer months, but my family and I really enjoy going to the summer outdoor concert series. Um, that the Shane Center offered. Um, and. It was, I think the pavilion will be a really nice addition, um, because it does get hot here in the summer. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Xander.
Hello. My name is Sarah Schofield and I live at two-ten South Eighth Street here in Livingston. And I'd like to, um, just address specifically, um, how the pavilion project. Meets some of the aspects of Livingston's growth policy. So I wanted to come in front of you guys and encourage you to approve the Shane Center's request for a special exception permit. Uh, because it's specifically in line with the City of Livingston's growth policy. Um, the growth policy defines Livingston as an arts and cultural destination. And its objective is to support cultural facilities, neighborhoods and districts. The pavilion project fits this objective. The growth policy encourages in-bill, um, compact development and a mixture of uses within our city limits. Shane Center, I think, checks off all of those aspects of that goal. Um, another growth policy goals to diversify Livingston's economy by supporting. Industries and initiatives that increase employment opportunities and personal income. The Shane Center has, through its arts and performance offerings. A long-established track record of positive and economic impact for our community. And lastly, the growth policy ensures outdoor recreational facilities that promotes Livingston's historic natural and cultural attributes. And I think with the design of the pavilion, it incorporates our natural environment as best it can as a permanent structure. But also reflects our city's history with the railroad. So I wanted to encourage you to enact the growth policy by, um, voting to approve this special exception permit for the Shane Center. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Other folks in the room?
Um, I'm Angela DiBonnie. I'm at four-twenty-three South F Street. And I love the idea. I love the Shane Center. Um, my daughter's been involved in many of my first workshops and. Uh, I appreciate that they do, they strive to give scholarships to the families who. Um, want their kids to go to this and can't afford to. Um, I also take a lot of classes there, um. With Jessica Kerr. And so I have a couple of questions about when these extra, when these classes are being held. And if there is even in the pavilion, well. Almost a thousand possible attendees, where will the folks who attend the classes, you know, park? So as an attendee, that's kind of my part. Um, and then I had a question about some clarity, um. From the zoning, um, from Jen is talking about the new D Street exit turning right. Is that the existing exit that's only going to be right turning or is there going to be a new exit put in? Um, so that's because if, are we building a new exit, then that means there's fewer parking spaces. Um, and then my last thing, as a former employee, Phase Cafe, um, will the Shane Center, you know, um, partner with Phase to offer food at some of the events? Because I think that would be a great thing for the community and the Shane Center and Phase Cafe. Um, plus, you know, when I go to, um, music in the parking lot, um, it'd be nice to have some food options and. We all know Phase makes amazing food. Um, so those are my, um, main. Thoughts at this point.
Thanks, Angela.
Thank you.
Other folks in the room?
Well, I'm just going to hand some.
Hello, my name's Jakey, first three-twenty-five South May. I'm in favor of the, uh, Shane's request for a special exemption. Mainly because every Thursday last year, the scene get rain. Ah, there, and I, and they said, bring your umbrella. I thought, our umbrella, it's never going to rain. Every, the Thursdays were a bad. Uh, option for me. But I. Uh, I would, uh, this admission has made such a stance on where we have to stand, where we, we, we can't give away. This, we can't give away that, so I just hope you don't have the temerity to ask for a reduction for fees for roll-off. This for the construction that may be used, because they have made, uh, they've stood their stance and they are not there. They're not going to get anything.
Just make sure you're addressing us.
Well, no, well, yeah, yeah, well, yes, but I, I just want to look at, that was sort of. You got it.
Thank you, Dan.
Just a great one, two-oh-four East Calendar Street, Livingston. Uh, one of the board members at the Shane Center suggested, asked me if I would. I'm an advocate for this pavilion. I can't even tell you a big that yes is. And he did that because as a city, city commissioner was standing, I had to sue my own city. So that we would have the Shane Center. I was retired person. It cost me eleven thousand dollars and it's the best eleven thousand dollars I ever spent in my life. I never had a public opportunity. To thank Russell particularly. For his vision. Um, they have set a standard. For our community and for our state and beyond on how you could take a building. Like East Side School and turn it into everything it has become for this community. This pavilion is an example. They wanted to have outdoor concerts. So they put up during COVID. But plywood stage. Instead of just keeping a plywood stage there before you tonight. With one of the most beautiful pavilions you could imagine. Based upon our history as a railroad town. The vision and the, the depth of the vision. Of, and I'm sorry, don't mean to embarrass you, Russell. But the depth of the vision of this man and his interaction with these kids. And with this community is quite a phenomenon and I can't even tell you. How much I think of every single step along the way. That this organization has taken. It's remarkable and of course. This would only add again and yet. To what the contribution of this particular person to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
That is, that doesn't include, exclude everybody else, but.
But we understand. Other folks in the room? All right, I'm going to look online now because there's quite a few online. People online want to comment on this issue? If you could raise your little hand. If you don't know how to do that. Uh, we'll get through the raised hands first and then go a different direction. Valerie Kinley.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. My name is Valerie Kinley and I live at two-thirteen West Park Street. Uh, in my opinion, the pavilion is needed because now more than ever, we spend way too much time in front of our screens. The pavilion will provide an avenue for community members to get fresh air and connect with each other. While enjoying one of the greatest things about Livingston, the outdoors. Additionally, while umbrellas were a great quick fix when there was rain during the outdoor summer concert series, there is one issue, the wind. The pavilion can solve that issue and provide opportunities for the Shane Centers' cur- current offerings to grow. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Valerie. Other folks online? If you're struggling to find the little hand to raise, I welcome you to come off mute. This is my last call for people online that want to give comment on the Shane Center. You see anything in the chat? Anything else in the room? See nothing? Closing public comment on the special exemption permit request from the Shane LaLanne Center. And now commissioners, um. Have a few follow-up questions. Do you want me to start with those?
Please.
Um, okay. And if I missed any, please let me know. Um, the first one was from James Wilich. Do we have a sense of how many, we have the, we have a sense of the eight to ten. Um, event number being a maximum of ten from May to September. Do we have a sense of how many events? Are going to be happening up until eight throughout the summer, given? The list that was in the packet and also the fact that it sounds like the Shane is open to partnering and renting the space.
Um, no, the, the city does not have a clear, uh, understanding at this time of how many events would end before the PM deadline.
Okay. The next question was Angela DiBonnie. She had a few questions, um. In the. I'm sorry. Okay, you guys are, okay. I. Thought maybe you were, I misspoke. I was just checking. Okay, so Angela DiBonnie, um. Do we have a sense like for the parking, how will be managed for the existing ongoing classes while for the spaces that remain open inside the building? While events would be happening in the pavilion?
Um, we don't have an understanding of how, you know, parking spaces will be managed and allocated. I would offer the applicant an opportunity. The, the only thing I would point out is that, you know, they, they did provide the letter, um, today, uh, related to, uh, potentially as many as forty-six additional spaces. Offended the Lincoln School, but I would offer the applicant an opportunity.
Thank you, yeah. If, if you'd like to, Erica, we'd welcome your feedback.
Absolutely.
Do you mind coming up and just speaking loud? So.
Of course, yeah. Absolutely. Per our, uh, presentation, we will encourage, uh. Alternate modes of transportation, uh, for any, in, included in our marketing for any of the events taking place in the pavilion. Um, so that we minimize the parking impacts for those, uh, in also will, um. Have engaged with the Lincoln School in providing forty-six additional spaces and, uh. There's a few other places that we're looking at trying to create your parking agreements as well.
So it sounds like, um, you're still in the process, for example, the question that one of our residents asked of like how you would manage their current use space with potential for. Future use, so like those folks taking yoga classes or whatever would still have a place to park relatively near where they're. Paying, you're still kind of figuring out some of those details. Okay, so to be determined, but you're working on it.
Yeah, and we will continue to be good neighbors as well as a good, uh, tenant and landlord for the existing businesses that we have.
Thank you. I think that's important for folks to hear. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, my next question will be for you and staff, Mr. Gager. So can you clarify that, um. That new exit that Jen was talking about, maybe like showing an image of what she was describing?
Uh, absolutely, Chair. It's, um, while we bring up a, uh, image of the. Uh, absolutely, Sharon. It's, um, while we bring up a, uh, image of the site that actions. While we bring up an image of the site, then for those of you familiar with the block, um, the, um, south. Uh, west corner of the block, there we go. Um, you will see in the bottom left hand, um, of, of the image that appears. Uh, there is a new, um, exit from the property that is proposed on to D Street. And it's approximately in the vicinity of, uh, there's a tree there.
So it's just interior of the pedestrian walkway?
Exactly. And, and quite honestly, the proximity, um, in the bottom left of this image, the D Street and Lewis. Uh, is a controlled intersection on D Street. Lewis, the trap on Lewis has the right way there. And so, um, staff, as, as we observed that intersection functioning, the, the new proposed exits. Is rather close to the controlled stop on D Street. And so our, our goal was, um, not to create a non-located at that stop sign.
Thank you. Hopefully that image helps clarify a little bit. Um, and then the last one is not really our jurisdiction, but it's a question for the applicant still, um. Obviously, you know, do you know if there's any opportunity, like if the folks of the Shane Center are considering like vending? With their current tenants like phase for future events. Did you wanna?
I would offer the.
Take an opportunity to address that for the public. Do you mind? Thank you, Erica.
Uh, absolutely. We would love to partner with existing, uh, tenants and. Uh, last year we utilize, uh, Hans with the pizza, with his pizza. Food truck and, uh, we, this year for this year are, uh. Utilizing, uh, RX ambulance, um, to serve. Uh, provides some foods, but absolutely wanna partner with anyone who's interested, um, and approved by the city. Just to be clear, uh, with the proper licenses at the corner concerts for any event that we.
Thank you. I hope that helps. Yeah, that pieces. Okay, so those are like the community questions that we had. Um, commissioners, who would like to go first? You can ask your own follow up questions if you want also. If you have any or comments about where you've heard for the proposal before us.
Everyone's looking at me, so I guess. I, I think it seems like a great opportunity to continue to support the arts in our community. Um, I was pretty compelled by the, the kids sharing their stories. Um, and, you know, I think whenever anything happens, uh, when, whenever there's any development. They're gonna be parking questions. It's one of the stickiest issues in, in all of, uh, land use and transportation. And I've actually written about it, um, in, in journal articles and, um. One of the things I can say from some of that research that I've done is that in a, in a more mixed use environment, that's, um, conducive to alternative modes. There's often much less, um, parking requirements than there are in a, in a more suburban context. This is, this is a place right in the middle of our city that, um. I think it's, it's reasonable to assume that, that there will be, um. Folks doing, uh, folks traveling there, um. In, in ways other than the automobile. Um. Uh, this is sometimes restrictions or, or lack of parking, in fact, encourages folks to, to use. Um, things out of, other than the automobile. Um, that, that's not to say that parking shouldn't, should never be a, a salient consideration. I think it, it, it often should be, um, but I think in the context of, you know, the, the, the dense mixed uses. In, in our urban core, um. I think it's reasonable to, to think that, um, particularly with some, uh, support from, from the applicant. That, uh, we can promote alternative ways of transportation. So. Uh, I, I think this is really exciting. Can't wait to go and, um. I, I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons. Uh, Commissioner Short.
Next, um. Looking at it, it, it doesn't really, um, change what's going on now, except, um, for the fact that we have a pavilion with the roof. Over and stuff like that. Um, I thought we were losing some parking spaces. Maybe if we did, maybe three or four, but the way. Uh, the way it's laid out, um, is great. Um. It's just an enhancement of the facility that we have now. I think, you know, it'd just be, uh. Uh, very nice. Um, one thing I would like to comment, um. The, uh, architecture of the pavilion, very reminiscent also of the city time, the, you know, steel trusses and stuff like that. Um, and, uh, I like that utilization as well, so I'm all for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz and, um, you always bring that eye detail. Thanks for that. Other commissioners?
Oh, boy. I'm coming at this with a whole different sample. Uh. One of the crown jewels of this town when we first moved here was a theater. We support two theaters for a town this size. The only acting I've ever done on stage was originally where they were the original thing. My wife is a card carrying professional actress. She's done stuff there. She's done stuff in the other stuff. She's made movies. I walked the area with somebody during a week. What a win-win situation when you think about it. Uh, there are a couple of issues. One was the parking and other things. Now, the way it sits right now. Since they're gonna build an outdoor thing, they block. The exit to the building down further. That's gotta close. But they're gonna develop a new exit. If you're familiar, when you park your car coming, you go to the play, you pull out. And you're gonna go beside the building and then they're gonna make another exit at that point. So the other exit doesn't exist anymore for traffic after the play, but after the play starts on this one. There's gonna be a new, uh, area, a new area to, to get out of there. Which is a good idea. It's also the proving grounds for a lot of young people in this town. That might be wanna go into professional things because they have that aptitude. Just think of what it is to the community for this size. They have it what just it is right now, but also to expand what it's gonna be. And I can't say, it's a win-win. Uh, you know, the families that are affected around there, it is pretty hard for me to judge. Well, what I did see is there are things that if they wrap up around eight thirty, nine o'clock at night. And you have small children or whatever, I don't think that's a huge issue. But I think it's a win-win. So if anybody's got any other ideas about that, but I mean, that's my thing. I think we're very lucky to have the operation right here and add this one other thing to it. We're gonna be a destination for a lot of traffic, which is good, um, be people to Livingston. I'm trying to find the negative of it. I have a hard time. So that's my personal thing. Go for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you wanna go next?
I will go next. So I was the kid that didn't play sports really, right? Um. I didn't fit in school. I was a dancer. And then I started to do musical theater and I found my people. Um, so Erica, look at you and you're making me cry very much. Um, and the boys that were in here. You know, we all don't fit into the same box and, you know, to have a place where we fit in. It's not the same box. That seems like. When you go to a high school and sports is really important to everybody else, it's really nice to have another space that you fit into. And you find a family and you find your people and you get to express yourself and you learn to speak in public. Um, you know, and so it's. I'm so thankful for, to have the Shane Center. I don't really get to participate as much as I would like to, but it, it's nice to have it down the street. I am a neighbor as well. I really do appreciate the chains that are reaching out to the neighbors. Having a meeting with the neighbors to discuss what was happening. Great to have a good neighbor and that's what you are. Um, I will just, from sort of the other perspective of my life, I've been an event planner for a very long time. Um, so I'm gonna remind you to be good neighbors. Um, you know, that would be my only, you know. Always keep that in mind, you know, like remember to be a good neighbor. Remember what you're doing, you know, like. As Mr. Willich said over here, you know, an event every night of the week, all summer long is not gonna make you a good neighbor. They'd ask you to just keep that in mind and even as you promote your rental spaces and all of that, to really consider that as you, as you do that. Um, you've, you've shown us all these years that you've been a good neighbor and so. I'm gonna, I'm trusting in you to continue, um, to be that. I know that, you know, originally when, when this, this, the theater was proposed, that the growth isn't exactly. What you started with and where you're going now is not the same, but we all pivoted, right? We all pivoted during COVID. And you found a space that maybe we didn't know we needed. Um, and so I appreciate that, to look at that pivot and to see how that, um. Works in our community. I have friends that live within that whole neighborhood. And have had conversations and everyone says how much they've enjoyed the summer concert there, series. How it's nice to maybe just sit out on their porch and listen and not have to leave the house. Um, so. I've heard only really good things and I'm excited to see this move forward. Um. And I will.
Thank you, Vice Chair Phil. Um, I will start by saying what we said the last time we voted on something for the Shane Center. And that's that I think we all love the Shane Center. It's a reason I live here. It's the reason we moved here. It's one of the things that puts Livingston on the map. We all know it. We've heard it all night. Um, it's fantastic. People love the work that you do. Thank you. Um, also, I wanna commend the staff for an excellent staff report. This is one of the best, um, staff reports I've ever seen. Including all sorts of departments really weighing in on how to get us to the safest place. Moving us towards the best use for public good. Um, so thank you for the hustle that staff had to do for this project. Um, I have lots of accolades that I could add to the project. I think we need a, we need a shady space for sure for kids. That's like a real issue, like. If you're outside all day and there's no shade downtown and you're on cement, it's a problem. It's a health issue. So I think that's a great amenity for our community. Um, love the idea of camps and things there in addition to everything else that folks mentioned. Um, I believe that the Shane Center would be a good partner. Um, I feel like my role as a commissioner though is to codify being a good neighbor and not just take somebody's word on it. Because in, you know, five to ten years, everybody at the front of this room could be different people. And we don't know who's gonna be at the Shane Center either, like people come and go. Um, hopefully many of us will obviously still be engaged in our community, but like realistically, like, um, if we don't put it in code. Then it doesn't really exist as a guideline. Um, so some, some things that I've heard from community members. Who live in the neighborhood is that they might not have been aware of the eight to ten window being that frequent in the summer. They're a little concerned about what that volume would be like at their house. So that's one reason I asked about decibel levels because some of my background and expertise, expertise happens to be in sound and communication. And so I think that there's some simple fixes, um, pretty, pretty straightforward things that could happen. Um, between people who are, with people who are in that world to mitigate sound for the neighbors. Um, the design of the building is beautiful and also for folks who study sound, we know that built structure changes. How sound moves through the environment and how it's amplified and how it carries, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'll spare everyone the science lesson, but, um, these are things that, um, haven't been tested yet in the field because the structure doesn't exist. Um, but we know that it will change things. Um, the other thing is. The sort of test sites have been, it sounds like between the one. Hundred to four hundred and sixty range and we're now talking about nine hundred and ninety-nine people, which is also very different than what's been. Tried in the neighborhood. Um, it seems like the community is really amenable, but I'm just really concerned because it's a very big jump. It's more than double, um, to get up to nine ninety-nine. A thousand people is very different than a hundred and fifty people at ten PM in your neighborhood. Um, so I'm thinking about health and safety. I'm thinking about, um, the sound of a thousand people is different than the sound of four hundred people. Especially in a built environment, which theater people will get much more than me, I'm sure, because you build environments, move sound. Um. And. I think that, uh, James brought up a good point of what is the cap for shows until eight o'clock? Because shows every night at eight until eight o'clock change the character of a neighborhood. And if we're looking at this thirty point seventy-five that everybody wants to reference tonight, the special exemptions. Um, it says that the use will not place a substantial adverse effect upon nearby properties or their occupants. Again, I'll spare you the science lesson, but. Um, I will note that extended noise that's ongoing does have negative health impacts. There's direct health impacts to, of, related to noise and how people live. It's well documented. Um, the research is out there. I don't need to cite it. Um, and that's something simple also that Livingston could do is just put some of this good neighbor agreement into code. So that it's really clear moving forward, so that everybody continues to be in good relationship. So I personally am in favor of the project and also, um. I would like to see some of these things addressed and not just green light it without an agreement between the Shane Center and the community. Um. I don't think I'd be comfortable with the cap of nine ninety-nine without it being field tested. We've only gone up to four sixty and it hasn't been consistent at four sixty. Um, that will change the neighborhood pretty severely. I mean, a thousand people, I'm wondering if we're shutting down streets, to be honest. If we have like a thousand people, I'd like to finish Commissioner Shorts and then we can take.
A housekeeping.
Yeah, I'll finish. Oh, I don't think we need to extend, do we? Do you have an end time on the?
No, no, we don't. I, I, Commissioner Schwartz is referencing that typically we try to take a break every night.
Oh, no, no, not the break. Just if we have it instead of the need.
So, okay, so just to recap.
Cool.
Nine ninety-nine concerns me because we haven't tested that. The max at four sixty has not been a consistent four sixty. It's been occasional. I'm concerned about sound because neighbors have brought sound up to me. And we don't have any data or, um, sound mitigation in place to protect those neighbors. We know there's health impacts to sound. Um, and the point that James brought up, just to recap the. Going till eight o'clock every night of the week. We don't have a guarantee that that won't happen. All that said, I am in favor of this. I just would like to see some little things like this addressed so that we can make sure that we're meeting, um. The community's expectation that we, the commissioner, are keeping them in a health and safe environment. And I don't feel like I can say yes without these things being addressed. That's where I stand as a commissioner. Um, do you folks want to? I would like to wrap this agenda item up before we take a break, just because it's weird to take a break in the middle. Um. So I guess that's where I'm at and I don't know, um, if we have. Do we have information? I know like noise is a thing that's addressed in many communities. Um, since I've been a commissioner, it's come up. We've been sort of at the edges of it for a long time. But we haven't ever formally discussed noise. But I wonder how other communities that do this already deal with this because certainly it's a doable thing with the right code.
Thank you, Sharon. It's, I'll try to address that question as best I can. Um, while, uh, the, the team here brings up, uh, a copy of the, the relevant section of Livingston Municipal Code. Um, the city of Livingston does not currently have a decibel, uh, level included in our code. Relative to, um, the playing of, of music and so, uh, shown on the screen and, um, we are sharing this with folks at home. Um, section ten dash five of the Livingston Municipal Code states that playing of any radio, sound amplification equipment. Or any musical instrument in such a manner or with such volume, particularly during the hours between ten PM and seven AM. Or at any time or place so as to annoy or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of any person in any hospital. Or in any dwelling hotel or any other type of residence or of any person in the vicinity. And so, um, we, again, do not have a decibel level. Um, ours is more of a, a qualitative measure. Um, that, that prohibits, uh, annoying or disturbing the quiet comfort or repose of any person. Um, whether they are in a residence or simply in the vicinity.
So I guess my concern is the way that our code is written. And, and this is to protect the Shane Center also. Anyone could say if they didn't like the show that night, that they were annoyed. And then expect that the city would be, um. and then expect that the city would be um, you know, taking some punitive action against the Shane Center because that resident was disturbed because they didn't like the show that night. Um, I, I would love to see if there's like a formal way just to make it so the Shane Center can do what they need to do to fulfill their mission and also so it like protects residents, but also protects the agreement between the city and the Shane Center. Um, do you think that there's potentially a path forward? Like with the applicant rather than going through code or like, if the rest of the commission thinks that this should be addressed, I just see it as a point of contention. I would like, I'd like to, I'd like the contentions to be dealt with prior rather than having a situation six months from now where the room is full like we've seen at other government meetings in our county um as it pertains to concerts. And so I, I'm wondering how to like mitigate that and just create a better agreement from the beginning.
Yeah, absolutely, Chair Ns. I, I appreciate your desire for specificity in this specific instance. Um, and so we have included um on this slide uh some representative samples from some of our neighbors in Montana that do have a decimal level in their code and, and as shown here, uh, the city of Billings within the residential district um allows up to sixty-five decibels um from seven A M to eight P M and then it reduces from uh eight P M to seven A M down to fifty-five decibels. And, and these are um as measured uh in both cases here at the, the property line of the property and, and Great Falls within their residential district. Uh, somewhat the same, a little bit lower uh requirement there. Fifty-five decibels are allowed uh from seven A M to eight P M. Um, and then it drops down to fifty decibels from eight P M to seven A M again as measured at the property line.
If it was the will of the commission, could it go through the application prop- like, could it go through um, an agreement with uh this particular agreement through the special exemption permit process or would it, we need to have, would we have to codify it?
Uh, no, if it was the, the desire of the commission, you folks could add a decimal level as a condition of approval.
Um, okay, and then my other concern is um, I mean, I don't know how we get around the the issue of um being a good neighbor and not doing things every single night of the week that would change the character of the neighborhood. I mean, I think there's probably a balance to figure out there. Do you have thoughts on?
Uh, I, 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 yes, uh absolutely, Chair Ns. I, I would offer that there is somewhat of a framework that has been presented or proposed by the applicant, which is to limit the number of events um past eight P M. Uh, if it was the will of the commission, I might offer that the, the commission could um propose restricting the number of events that fall outside of, say, normal business hours after five P M might be, might be an option. Um, but, but yeah, whatever the, the will of the commission is.
And then um, and let's say, let's say hypothetically, we did that and then like a few years go by and it's a wild success and the community's like, oh my gosh, we're totally fine with things going till eight. It's not as loud as I worried it would be. Like, can, would the Shane Center be able to come back and say, okay, we wanna like amend the agreement and like increase? Uh, uh, like I'm just thinking, is there an opportunity to grow it if it's successful rather than like, I, I don't want the Shane Center events to, to get backlash from the community if it, if, if, if it was too much too soon for the neighborhood, is kind of what I'm thinking. Is there, would there be that opportunity to amend it?
Uh, certainly there, we, we could have that opportunity to work with the applicant and um, you know, we could, we could include that as a, one of the conditions here that the um, that the permit will be uh reassessed, um, you know, with respect to certain conditions or certain conditions of the permit will be reassessed, you know, in, in a.
Like, it's not like surprise, you can't do this anymore. It's more like a, we can revisit this and improve it a bit if there's an opportunity and they're, they have an interest, okay? And then the, I'm not done yet. Commissioner Freeman will come back around. Um, the next one is the nine ninety-nine. Do we know um, I'm really concerned about that number for the reasons I've already stated. Do you have thoughts on that one?
Uh, you, you know, speaking to both the police chief and fire chief uh earlier today, we had a bit of an exchange on, you know, operational parameters of larger events and um, you know, we certainly uh do require um EMS coverage um typically at, at five hundred um people in, in an event at three hundred if alcohol is being concerned. And uh, and, and similarly for, for police coverage there. And so um, yeah, we do have it precedent elsewhere in city operations for um, moving in crowd size or uh at least assigning personnel to be redlining over certain crowd sizes.
So does, how does that work? Does that, do the, do the, does the Shane Center in that instance like offset the cost and pay for like fire and, fire and police to be on the scene since that's, you know, added staff hours? I'm trying to remember how that works.
Yeah, so, so typically in a, a special event, um, you know, as discussed earlier today, in fact, we have certain fees for um, for certain city services. And so, yes, we do currently have a per hour fee for uh any EMS crew with equipment. And we have a per hour fee for uh police coverage as well. And so um in a, a typical special event permit, which is um generally provided for events in the public space, uh we would charge those fees. I, I could very much contemplate that we would um offer that fee structure as we do to events in private locations as well.
So there would, that would be an administrative function. We wouldn't have to worry about that. It would be, um, okay. I so those are my concerns as a commissioner. I want to be able to vote yes on this and also I really want these things to be addressed rather than having conflict come back to the commission because we didn't take care of it in the beginning. Um, I want to give other commissioners, there are a couple that wanted to go a second round. Commissioner Schwartz, did you want to? Commissioner Friedman, go ahead. Go ahead.
My question is, uh, how many people in this room have seen a summer program at the Shane Center? How many, they've been open all, other, this is not the first thing they're going to do. They've been, they've been operating in the summertime.
Right.
Okay, so I'm just wondering how many people in this room been there and what might be the, the problem?
I, I was naming the problems from people who live in the neighborhood, who have been there for every.
Neighborhoods now, I'm talking, okay, what did you see? You're going into the, uh, an event. And my question is uh, what, what was your observation of it or what are the downfalls of it or what might be the, what might be the problem?
So what I was naming were the problems that were brought to me by neighbors of the Shane Center. So one is um drunk people throwing trash in their yard, drunk people disturbing outside of their house. Um, the noise sometimes is a concern if it goes too late, not being able to find parking by their house, particularly people who might have um special needs like small children and lots to carry. And it's an old neighborhood where there isn't required off-street parking when those houses were built. So some of those family homes don't have parking except for the street and they haven't, and they haven't been able to get home. So those are some of the issues that real people in Livingston have been dealing with for like the last however many years that the Shane Center has been doing this. And so I'm knowing that they're talking about trip like doubling or, you know, doubling from, over, more than doubling from their max capacity. There will be impacts to the people who live because they're already being impacted at lower numbers. And so what I'm asking is that we just get some clarity on these sticky points. So it helps those people that already live in the neighborhood. Um, I'm for the event and I'm for the center, but I really want these community members to not be overlooked in the process because they don't.
I know, but that's what I was hoping was gonna come.
Well, that's what I'm sharing with you. Not everybody's gonna, not everyone is gonna feel comfortable coming to a public meeting
I got you.
and saying that the, they've had issues as particularly with a beloved institution like the Shane Center. So I want to just acknowledge that like it, it would be hard for some people in the public to say what their challenges were, knowing that we all love the Shane Center. It could be a really uncomfortable situation for certain community members, so I'm happy to speak for those people. With all due respect, of course.
All right.
Because nobody wants to say that they've ever had an issue with the Shane Center event. That's the reality. And I don't want those folks to be um, lost in the shuffle, you know, because they also matter as much as the Shane Center.
And those are the people you like to hear from, and I understand that.
Well, I've, I've, I've heard from them now and I'm telling you what they told me. They, I don't know that everybody wants to come to a public meeting and say, but, which I can understand. It's not easy to do. Um, so commissioners, any thoughts on the things that I shared? Obviously you can have your own opinion. I would like to see some of these things just addressed. Because I don't want this to come back to us in six months with problems that we could have addressed upfront.
Um, to put a clarification on the don't they state no more than three or four events per month in the summer?
The past eight o'clock, there's no more than ten in the May through September window. But there's no provisions for up to eight P M.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So Mr. Gager was, Mr. Gager was saying that there could be some, a provision or condition where um it could be regular business hours, so till like five.
Right.
If we wanted and then over time that could be amended. If it turns out that there's actually not a problem, we could, that could be amended by a future commission.
So they're saying, I'm, I'm just looking at here and these are the, this is proposed from the applicants. This means that there will be approximately two to three outdoor events in the pavilion, pavilion per month during the five-month form season. That will, okay, that will go past eight P M. But we don't have any numbers about how many might go until eight P M from like the five to eight P M time that Mr. Gager was um.
Right, but they did include this excellent, they in, they, I think that they included something that might be a starting point. So on page one eighty-seven of the packet, under intended use, um, I, I really liked this because I think this could address some of what we're talking about. The Shane Center outlines what their plan is. It's just not, I don't think it's in the agreement, but we have it here in our packet. So um Thursdays in June and July, four to seven. So that's the summer outdoor concert series, I believe, where we saw folks sitting on the ground and it was free. Is that right? That's the free event. Um, which many people would be interested in our community. The day camps during the daytime hours, so those are the one-week sessions in June and July. So it sounds like that wouldn't be an issue because it's during the daytime working hours. Um, the summer young actors workshop is in August and it's just two weeks and only goes to four o'clock. So it sounds like there probably wouldn't be much conflict there because it's ending in the business hour time. The gala's only once a year on um the third Saturday in August. Um, Shakespeare in the Park. Is that just, do they just do it once when they're in town? So it's once a summer around Labor Day. And then the poss- the possible additional uses, incident command center, hope it never has to get used for that. I imagine that would be a very different scenario than the daytime hours we're talking about because it would be in an emergency. Um, a backup location for art show that doesn't have hours, but it's obviously um, during the day. Um, I don't know when the arts show closes. I don't remember, but anyway, this is, they're inviting opportunities to partner clearly. Um, open air events, that would be a potential thing to work out as future open air events. Um, like when they are and how late they go. That could be a potential um thing to address before it happens. And then the community resource would be um, some of the events that Erica was talking about, like partnering with the ballet or maybe like the schools or other groups that knew that. So it sounds like that they would ensure that it wouldn't go past eight o'clock because they're gonna reserve that eight to ten for their own events, right? And then, but up to eight, we don't know for sure. Did I understand that correctly, Erica, that the eight to ten, um, the ten summer events from eight that last until ten P M are reserved for the Shane Center basically not for partners or would there be additional?
No, not necessarily.
They have ten.
But it'd be ten period total regardless of.
Right, yeah, that was just an intention to alleviate some concerns.
Nope, that's okay. Perfect, you got it. Thank you. Answer my, I, thank you for helping me. Um, so it sounds like while we don't have um this spelled out, I think we have the framework that could alleviate some of the community concerns and like put the good neighbor agreement into an actual agreement that we could lean into and it could be amended as we move forward. What do folks think of that? Like um, adding a condition that we just put these these example events as a place to start. And my folks, I mean commissioners, what do you commissioners think of including their list as a place to start?
Yeah, um, I might add that. Um, I look at this packet as part of the whole agreement, but maybe I'm.
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
I look at this, everything that's written in here is part of the agreement, and it's not, not.
I don't think that it is. Is that, well, we can check. Mr. Gager, is this, if it's in the packet, should we assume it's?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, unless the motion.
Less emotion.
The conditions that we should be guided at. And, and I might offer if.
Please, sir.
Chair Ns, that um, you know, simply including this, this, um, you know, this is, is noted as the intended use of the, of the facility. And so including this specific list um may, you know, lock the, the applicant into these events. And so I, I might caution against.
Gotcha.
Against that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Can I make a suggestion?
I want to ask a follow-up question first. So what would your suggestion be that wouldn't lock?
Well, if, if it is the, the will of the commission um to um the uh know um with some specificity what, what type of events will, will happen up until eight P M, I, I would offer that. Um, you know, perhaps we could include a specific number and I'd offer that perhaps the, the applicant may have a number in mind or some information they may wish to share regarding timing of different events and, and volume of events. They may not have anything to offer them.
Okay, so if they have something to offer, great. And if they don't, that's okay because we know she works for a board like you're for a board and that's.
Thank you. Which is like to say that we're engaged with a sound engineer to help minimize uh sound, make sound out of polka. It's a licensed sound acoustical engineer to help condition the space and to be good neighbors and we'd be happy to put that in as, as a condition to our approval.
Cool. Thank you, Erica. And then who had the floor? Were, were you gonna?
I'm not really more, no.
Okay.
I wasn't gonna offer a suggestion.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Phil.
Um, so I'm wondering, you know, if we are concerned about the number of events that are happening. Um, you know, we could, I mean, I, and I'm just throwing this out there and this is sort of just a place to start. I'm thinking there's four weeks in a month. There's five months, right? And if we talk about two or three events a week that go, that start after five o'clock. If we say two, it's forty events for the summer. If we say three, it's sixty events for the summer. We subtract the ten that they want to do that go after eight o'clock. That leaves us with a number of events that they can do. I mean, so that would be like, you're gonna get this many events for the summer and that's all you can do.
If past, yeah, past like five or whatever.
Past five o'clock. I mean, if that's, if there's concern that we're not gonna, you know, that, that they're gonna do some, that there's an issue with every night of the week, I mean, but I don't.
Yeah, I mean, Vice Chair Kill, like I'm, that seems more palatable to me. And also it makes me think that there could be a condition for um the max capacity for events. So like probably nobody wants a thousand-person event every week in their neighborhood if they live with tiny people. For example, speaking from personal experience, um, I wonder if there's a way we could like limit the number of events over like their highest was four sixty, so like yeah, five hundred, like so like one event in the summer can be over five hundred. I mean, we have no idea how the, we've never gone up, up to five hundred, let alone more than doubling the four sixty. So I'm really nervous about. Um, we don't know what the impact to the neighbors are gonna be. We just, we have no idea. Um, we don't know. We don't know what it's gonna be like for traffic. We don't know what it's gonna be like for parking. We don't know what it's gonna be like when people are drinking alcohol and there's a thousand people. Um, we, we don't know. That's like a lot of people to put in the middle of a residential neighborhood and that's what it is. It's a historic, it's an old neighborhood of families, older homes. They don't all have off-street parking and it's a thousand people right across the street from where they live. That's, that's what we're talking, that's, that's the potential of what we're talking about. Because there's nothing saying that all events are gonna be small. Because there's nothing saying that all events are going to be small.
I mean.
Uh, that's the reality of what could happen. I mean, we could end up with a Plain Creek Lodge situation in the middle of Livingston.
This is the applicant number five, can you ask?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Gager, can we ask the applicant?
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, I would invite you if you have um thoughts or ideas that maybe you know, things that we don't know that, that might not be in the packet addressing some of these, like the sound engineer is really helpful. Thank you.
So my name is, and I won't write because I yeah, I'm trying to, um, but anyway, my name is Russell Lewis. Um, I'm the artistic director with the Shane Maloney Center for the Arts. Um, and I haven't been heavily involved with this process over the last few months because of a number of things that have happened in my life, and it kind of came off the rails a little bit. At any rate, um. The so what I would like to say is if there's going to be any significant um conditions placed upon the application by the commission that have not been presented to us yet. Um, the Shane Center, you know, uh neither Erica nor myself as staff are um authorized unilaterally going to any agreement um without further discussion with our board of directors, limiting how we use this space beyond what we have proposed thus far. Um, so if the commission is willing to uh move forward with just the recommendations from staff, put it to a vote, we'd happily, you know, um we would welcome that. But if there are going to be significant new conditions that are put onto it, um, I'm not sure what our recourse would be, but we do need to have an opportunity to discuss those things um with our board of directors. Um. To make sure that you know, the, the investment that the board is considering making in this facility, which is you know, uh currently an approved budget of one point five million dollars, and we'll probably get more of that actually pencils out from the needs of the organization as far as how we can use it. Um. We tried to uh put into our proposal um what we considered, uh you know, they are loose, but um respectful conditions. It is our intention to be respectful of the neighborhood. The Shane Maloney Center for the Arts um is, is, is owned and run by a board of directors. So if someone has something that they would um like to see the Shane Center do, I encourage them to contact our board president and consider um sitting on our board of directors. You know, this is a community organization. This is not something that is owned by an individual or a for-profit entity. Um, we believe that we have presented ourselves um and been incredibly good neighbors over the last fourteen years. We appreciate the trust that's been placed in us uh first back in two thousand nine and then over the intervening period. Um, we know that this is an ambitious project. We know that it's it's a new area for us, and it's a new idea for Livingston. So we understand that. Um, I'm just saying as point of order, um. I think, you know, we, we would welcome the commission's vote to approve based on the written staff recommendations. But anything, you know, too significant beyond that regarding, you know, limiting our use of what is essentially private property. Um, you know, uh afterward through this process, um, we would need an opportunity to discuss with our board to staff here. So um, I'm not sure what we should do is, you know, how we move forward. And this isn't bypass, but that's where.
So it sounds like you don't have, you're not able to respond to that, which is fine. I just want to say that we also are not-for-profit, and we also are the board of directors that are the public. And so we're, we find ourselves in a very similar situation and um.
And I understand, I, and I appreciate you looking after the interests of the neighborhood. I honestly do.
No, I believe you. And um I, so I would say commissioners, there's another opportunity we have, and that is um. It sounds like the Shane Center is not able to respond, which totally makes sense to me, just like Mr. Gager wouldn't be able to unilaterally speak for the commission. Um, I would offer that one of the things that Jen put up on her slide is that we could postpone it. We have within thirty days. I would like to see some of these things get addressed. I don't think that the commission should be forced into a decision, just as same as I don't think that the Shane Center employees should be forced into a decision. I would like some of these things to be able to get worked out before we vote personally. Um, I don't want to be forced into a vote when I'm uncomfortable with what's in front of us. I don't know how others feel. I mean, there's a simple solution, and that's we can direct our manager to work with the Shane Center Board to come up with a solution to some of these things before it moves forward. Thoughts? You're welcome to sit down. Thank you, Russell.
Wish us brought up sooner. Um, I mean, your um, your concerns and they're valid, they're, they're good. And uh um at this juncture, um, I'd like to as the city manager, um, where we go from here, we don't put this to a vote tonight. And uh I'll see when you get this back. Back on the table, I mean, you know, thirty, thirty days, it sounds like a long time, but you know, they have board, you know, schedules and stuff like that, too. So um. A- a- as it is right now, I'm comfortable on voting. On this, and then perhaps looking at our ordinances to create a decibel ordinance and stuff like that. Um, I'm putting a lot of faith in this, you know. You know, knowing the board and you know, and everything else like that. But I also understand Melissa's concerns too, so. Um. I'm very respectful of that, so.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I want to let Mr. Gager reply to this, uh to Commissioner Schwartz, and then it will be your turn.
So um a- as a path forward, recognizing the, the constraints of staff of the Shane Center um are similar to my constraints. Uh, you know, I, I certainly um understand that. And um the, the Livingston Municipal Code provides that we have the opportunity, or the commission has the opportunity um to delay a decision on this for up to thirty days. And so if, if uh we don't have the ability to achieve consensus here today, I, I would offer that, um, it sounds like please correct me if I'm misreading things, but it sounds like there are two um points of, of possible discussion. One is on um maximum uh size of, of um a, a crowd at the theater with occupancy. And then the, the second is on noise. And so um certainly to guide my discussions with the, the applicants, I would appreciate um perhaps a little bit of direction. Um, I, I believe I've heard something, you know, contemplated in the neighborhood of five hundred or so. Excuse me, I missed the third one, which was actually the number of events that um that would end before eight P M at some point, before eight P M, right? And so those being the three, um, you know, I, I believe I've heard somewhere around five hundred or so um as, as a potential maximum occupancy. I, I have, we've not come really to the discussion on, on with decimals. But if I could have just some direction on those three components um to guide my conversations with the Shane Center, uh staff would be happy to engage in those conversations with the goal of bringing it back for you at the regularly scheduled June sixth meeting. If we're unable to do so, um, we would schedule a uh special meeting uh within the thirty-day window.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, um. But at, at this juncture right now, what are, what are the conditions that you want? Well, met.
That's.
I mean, because you're the one proposing this. I mean, I'm, I'm supposed to call him, ready to call, call, call the question, you know.
I want to let Commissioner Freeman speak, and then I'll answer your question. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay, there's an unknown here. Oh, you're talking about the past season. Now, we supported a lot of the shows outdoors. Number one. Number two, it's going to be a complete different building than it is back then.
Right.
Was not open. This is a more, which we haven't had experience with yet.
Right.
Totally different approach to it. And I agree with everything you're saying. I like you with the neighbors, and too, if you want these things to be smooth. So we do have to have people from the theater explain to us, okay, this is a new venue. It's not anything to do with last year, totally different thing. This is what it looks like. This is the kind of events we're going to have, so on and so forth.
Right.
And uh you can see I'm a pusher. But the thing is, we haven't had, uh, we don't have the background of the new building. So there's a lot of unanswered questions even at the moment. And I'm hoping these things can be resolved because I think this is a good thing for the city. Now, you're always going to have somebody. There's got to be somebody out there that's going to knock you over the head. So but you want to be able to have the facts for them. So that's where I'm coming from.
Yeah, and to be clear, the person that came to me is not a knock-you-over-the-head person. It's a very.
Yeah, because I, I mean this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay, I just don't want it to fall through the cracks because they don't have, so. Are you?
If you don't mind, I'd like to respond to your question. Um. So my suggestion would be, it sounds like the framework is here for the sound conversation. From what Erica said, they have a sound engineer, which is great. Um, I wonder if we could use that, that data from Billings and Great Falls as a starting point. Um. With the caveat that you're gonna, you know, our, our manager would be in a conversation with the sound engineer, and there might be new information that comes up that's reasonable um that we can't foresee at this moment. But that is a starting point. I'm guessing that Billings, if I remember correctly, also has different decibel levels for different zones. So maybe there's some information in there for outdoor theaters. I'm not sure, but there might be more information that you're able to find. Um. So maybe that decibel level can be relaxed during certain special events. I'm not sure. Um. I would be open to that. Is that, that's the first.
I guess what I'm looking for is A, B, and C. What do you want to see?
That's A.
Okay, it's noise.
Noise. Or is the commission comfortable with Mr. Gager having that conversation with the Shane Center?
Yeah.
Okay. And then two, um. I would like to hear what the Shane Center's needs are for the past five P M before eight P M events. Vice Chair Kell threw out a number that was like two to three times a week. That seems reasonable. They might want more. That might be way over the top of what they need, but figuring out if there's some arrangement or conversation that this, that Mr. Gager could have with the Shane Center, like dialing that in a little bit. Are folks open to that? Being addressed and included? Commissioners?
Yeah, as long as they can apply for an exemption on something.
They could increase it in the future if it turns out that there's no problems. That's what I would like also. Commissioner Lyons? Are you amicable to that being written down somehow?
Uh. I'm amicable to getting to yes. But I think that um I have some discomfort with mandating like the frequency of events on a private, uh, private basis. And I think that it has a potential to kind of go outside of our authority.
You know, if the sound can be addressed, the frequency of events might be less of an issue, to be honest.
Yeah, and that, and, and again, it's, the sound is the externality, but the quantifiable externality.
Right.
But the frequency of events. There's, there's no quantifiable externality there. That, that, that's, that's a, that's a, that's the way that someone's using their space. I think that um that, that's a kind of a sticking point for me.
It sounds like though the sound, the sound issue might take care of the other issue also.
That, and, and that would be fine.
Okay, so.
We are in the central business districts.
So we'll, so we'll not worry about that one.
Yeah, because.
So the direction as you drop that.
Like Carrie said, we are in central business. But we want to be respectful of the neighbors.
And then the third one is the, it'll be the second one because sound covers, thank you, Commissioner Lyons, and then the next one is the max capacity. Um. Vice Chair Kell said about five hundred. I said about five hundred. What do other folks think?
Anyway. You could be happy with five hundred, but with um with the ability to apply for its um exemption for a specific
It's a good idea.
You know, purpose, I don't want to hamstring this operation, you know, if something you know, worthwhile comes up.
It's a good idea.
You know, um. Yeah.
Mr. Gager, is that possible?
Uh, it is certainly possible for us to um discuss with the, the applicant a, a capacity limit that's below the design capacity.
And then what Commissioner Schwartz was saying, where they could apply for any, a special a special event um exemption.
Right.
If they wanted to have something that was like.
Right, because there's more, more footage with, you know.
Closer to two thousand people.
Allows capacity for nine hundred ninety-nine people. I, I don't want to lose sight of that fact that they're able to do that, but we can put a limit on at five hundred. But by law, by code, they can have nine hundred and ninety-nine. Um, if if there's a mechanism where you say, hey, we're going to have a thousand-person event, and we wanna special use for, for that or whatever it is, you know.
And, and that, that.
An exemption or some for this one-time thing. I, you know, there again, it's like Corey, I mean, Corey is bringing up, you know, limiting what you know, they really, really can't do. So I don't want to hamstring this operation.
Overstepping?
If I just may have a second.
Yeah, please.
Conversely.
Let's give him a minute.
Um, so we, uh, I, I could envision a situation where a condition is created that establishes uh a um to use Jen's term, a by-right capacity uh for the, the, the outdoor pavilion, a- and then anything above that would require special permission from the city. I, I certainly think that we could work that into a description.
Yeah, so I'd be comfortable with that.
With the five hundred number and then uh.
But, but allowing for a condition above that.
And then they would have to just do an application with the city.
Exactly, and we could set up a process for them to.
Specifically for them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is this five hundred number um a reaction to what we heard about the size of previous events?
A reaction?
Yes, what, where does the?
Where is the five hundred number? Because the largest event that they've um had so far has been four hundred and sixty people. And so um the Shane Center has been saying, this is going well. This is what we've been doing, but the biggest event they've had has been four hundred and sixty. They haven't had a thousand-person event, so we don't really know the impact. So yes, it came from four, it's Care, uh, Carrie, Vice Chair Kell rounded it up from four sixty to five hundred, and I think that's reasonable.
So I, um, I personally think that like setting a limit of capacity that's half of of what code would permit just based upon the num, the, the participation at, at previous events that were held like under a tent or in a parking lot. Um. It seems kind of arbitrary and um possibly short-sighted, uh, you know. I think that um when you're, when you build infrastructure for an event you can, I think it's reasonable to assume there's going to be more interest in an event that has appropriate infrastructure. Um. And so I, I, I understand that the that the, the reasoning behind this is a a, a trepidation of like allowing for something that's going to have an impact greater than we can perceive or have experienced. Um, but we have these mechanisms. These, we have these mechanisms for handling that, which is like thinking about um parking requirements and, and, and the code, which stipulates exactly how many people and can legally occupy a space. Um, and so I, I, I'm, I'm personally just kind of not comfortable with, or I just like, don't think it's good policy to come up with a number based upon a previous uh scenario that we're not, we're not talking about that previous scenario. We're talking about a, a new one. Um, and I don't think like coming up with a number based on that previous scenario is um uh, to me, it doesn't seem reasonable. Uh, and, and I, and I appreciate the, the reasoning behind that, which is like again, being, being concerned about what this might, how this might impact the neighborhood. I'm, I'm very um sensitive to that argument. But I don't think it's reasonable to just like assign a number that's kind of um that, that's relying on past experiences that are for a different um, or a different venue.
Mm-hmm. I guess my perspective, Commissioner Lyons, is the way that this is written is there could hypothetically be a nine hundred ninety-nine-person event every single day from May to September until eight P M. Every day for every summer. And when we're looking at the special exemptions, it says that no special exemption shall be granted by the city commission. This is in our code. Unless they find use will not place a substantial adverse effect upon nearby properties or their occupants. So I believe that nine hundred ninety-nine people seven days a week until eight P M. Ten days of that window would go till ten P M. Would have a significant adverse effect upon nearby properties and their occupants.
I, I think that that's entirely true, and I think that, I think that the occupancy. The occupancy of the structure is not the mechanism, the appropriate mechanism to consider. Um, how that, how that impact might. Um, be, might, might affect the, I think there are other mechanisms. Um, there are other precedented mechanisms for, for thinking about that. I, 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 I don't know off the top of my head, but I, to me, that it just feels arbitrary, and I don't, I don't think that's the problem.
Do you have a thought on what the, like, other ideas on what?
No, I, I, I'd have to, I, I would have to think about it.
I mean, my concern is like, if this goes through, we violated our own code because we would be putting the neighborhood in substantial. They'd have substantial adverse impacts.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with what we've put on the table of, of having these conversations continue. Through, through our city manager.
So we have to direct him on what we want him to converse about. So far, we've agreed on decibel levels. What else? We, we took the five, the five day window out of the picture because it's addressed. So what do you think?
I mean, I, I think our city manager has been, been paying close attention to this conversation and. And is, is creative. Um, and might be able to come up with, uh, with a, with an appropriate mechanism for the. For, for our fear of, for our justified fear of the potential impact on the character of, of the neighborhood.
So he asked us for specific specificity. Do you feel like you have enough specificity from us, or do you need more direction?
Uh, I, I will summarize what I have heard as that. Um, there is a concern about neighborhood impact. And the commission is, is interested in mitigating the adverse impacts on nearby property and, and residents. Um, but it's not necessarily clear that, uh, max capacity of, of the building is the avenue through which we will achieve that.
Do you need anything else from us to be able to move forward in conversations?
Uh, no, no, I, I think you've provided, um, a, a, a path forward for staff and I, as we work with the applicant. To, uh, come up with conditions that are, uh, amenable to the commission.
So, is everyone good now? Can we keep going? It's getting late and we still have work to do. Do, are we done with this topic for tonight? Cause I want to just ask a process question. If everybody said what they need to say for tonight? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Um, and we have a second. Do we need to take any action, or can we just? Pick this back up at the next meeting, or do we need to make a motion to take it back up at the next meeting?
Uh, I, I think just in the interest of clarity for the applicant, it would be appreciated if we could. Um, have a motion to continue the item to a date certain, and I may recommend our next. Uh, regularly scheduled meeting of June sixth as that dates in.
I'll just, uh, ask, do you want, do you want to make the motion?
I think you should.
Okay, I'll make the motion to, um, continue the item to date certain on June sixth. Do you have a second?
Okay.
Motion by news, second by Lyons. We'll call please.
Chair News for, for Commissioner Craven.
Yeah.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Or.
Or motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Gager. Thank you, Shane Center and partners. Uh, I think this is a great time to take another break. Commissioners, five minute break. Does that sound good? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to take a five minute break. You second my motion?
Yeah.
Second by. Motion by Hill, second by Friedman. All favor say aye. Okay, see you in five minutes.
All right.
We're gonna begin with a motion to extend, please.
I'll make him.
Please do.
I'll make a motion to extend the meeting. Do I have to say a time?
Please don't.
Until.
Yeah, until adjournment.
Okay, so motion by Kale.
Second.
Second by Schwartz. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
You're still here.
And here we go. Seventy-seven. Let's look and see where we left off. Shall we? We're on, uh, public hearings. So individuals are reminded that testimony at a public hearing should be relevant material and not repetitious. Allow me to flip. The appropriate page. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Livingston, Montana, mending chapter thirty of the Livingston Municipal Code entitled zoning. Remaking text amendments pertaining to zoning code chapter thirty, article two. Definition, section thirty point thirty, district description, table thirty point forty, list of uses, table thirty point forty-one residential density requirements. In section thirty point fifty-one, off-street parking and loading zones. Do you do this on purpose to me? Mr. Gager.
Um, thank you, Chair Nudes. Montana Code annotated requires that ordinances are titled with an appropriate level of description. It divides members of the community and understanding of the action that we are about to take. And so, yes, we do do it on purpose for transparency.
Thank you.
And all actions.
Thank you. I was feeling punished. No, I'm not. Thank you.
Uh, no, no, it's, it's, this was good government, and so.
The Supreme Court has set aside because. More instances because it, it didn't, it wasn't clear.
Excellent.
So.
I'm excited about this now.
That's right.
As you were. But I tried to stay.
You guys are on the ball.
We're, we're hoping this one does not get set aside because as you may recall from the first reading about a month ago. Uh, this is, um, a technical, uh, ordinance that, that, um. Eliminates some, some conflict within and amongst our Livingston Municipal Codes and zoning provisions. And so, um, because we have discussed this one. I will save the summary and simply stand for any questions that the commission may have or in follow-up from the, the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Commissioner Stuvaf? Yeah, Commissioner Lyons.
Um. This is as much for the recording as it is for any other reason. Um, and I, I think Jen would, would probably have an easier time answering this than you. Um, but could you? Do your best at articulating? The, the diversion of what staff proposed from. Um, what the zoning commission had, had suggested. Cause there were, I think there were. Two. Two things that differed. Um. And in what staff recommended to the commission, to the city commission. Um, from what the zoning mission had recommended. The, the reason that I, that I asked for that clarification is that I personally. Put a lot of, um, faith in, in our boards and, and. And committees and commissions. Um, and so when, when what we're voting on. Um, is a little bit different than what that expert board had, had suggested we, we do. I like to give that a little bit of attention. I, absolutely, Commissioner Lyons, I, um, I appreciate it. And so, uh, I will first point, um, the team's attention to page seventy-nine. And there are, uh, two bullet points, um, about two thirds of the way down the page. And so, um, the zoning convention, um, had, uh. Um, requested that no changes be made to section thirty point thirty of the code. And, um, those changes appear on page ninety-six of the packet. And then secondarily, uh, the zoning, um, commission, um. Uh, re- recommended, um. No updates to table thirty point forty, um, regarding the two, uh, zones. And so, um, you know, as I said, the, uh, change to section thirty point thirty appears on page ninety-six of the packet. And the, um, changes to table thirty point forty appear on pages ninety-seven, ninety-eight, and ninety-nine of the packet. And to be, um, to be very clear, um. The, uh, the change in section thirty point thirty refers to the description of the R two and R two and the H zoning districts. And, and, uh, table thirty, uh, point forty, um. Uh, refers to the multifamily dwellings, um, in R two and the R two mobile home district being not allowed. Um, allowed, or excuse me, they are allowed. As proposed, the zoning district or the zoning commission had proposed that they not be allowed, and so. And I'll, I'll, I'll just clarify that, um, as I understand it. What's being proposed here doesn't actually change, doesn't have any impact on the actual allowable den- density. But rather just kind of what we're calling that density, um, and the way that. And it allows a little bit more flexibility in the configuration of that, that, that density. Um, and will probably lead to fewer requests for, um. A, um.
Mm-hmm, variance.
Variance, thank you, uh, Chair Nudes. So, um, again, I think it's just helpful to point out mostly for the recording. That we are not talking about changing any allowable density, but really just the configuration of that density to be. Accommodating of the specific needs of, of specific prop- properties. Um. And. Thanks for having that conversation. And I yield.
Mm-hmm, thank you for having that conversation on behalf of the rest of us. Um, other commissioners, do you have questions? Uh, the only other question, the question I've got between the first reading and now is about things like parking. So the same standards apply, correct? Like whatever parking is allowed, if they're separate units, there's still, or excuse me, whatever parking is required, if they're separate units, it's still required. If it's. Like a conjoined unit.
That, that is correct. That has not changed.
Okay. Um. Ready for a motion and. The motion is stated. Page seventy-eight.
I move to approve ordinance three zero four one. About three at the city of Livingston zoning code, chapter thirty, article two, definition. Section thirty dot thirty, district descriptions, table thirty dot forty, list of uses, table thirty dot forty-one residential density requirements. And section thirty dot fifty-one, off-street parking and loading zones. And authorize the chair to sign ordinance thirty forty-one.
I'll second. Thanks. So a motion by Lyons and a second by Kale. Now we're gonna open the public hearing, and I won't be hitting anything. I'm gonna say this public hearing is now open. Not gonna send the gavel. Do folks. On this item? I'll start with people in the room. No one in the room. I'm looking online now. Is there anybody online that wants to comment on this ordinance?
Yes, please.
Hi, Angela, please go ahead.
Hi. Um. So I have some concerns about changing the label of. Um, duplexes to multifamily. Um, I pers- I live in an R two neighborhood that is near Saint Mary's Church. And I'm aware that. Um. There, there's an empty lot on my street, and I'm aware that the current owners are planning to put in a multifamily. Um, at least a fourplex on this, um, lot. So I have some concerns, uh, one regarding. Parking, of course, and secondly, regarding the, um. Issues with all the kids who walk back and forth to school. On the street and the, um, impacts that having. A multifamily unit on the street, um. You know, could affect kids and. Um, you know, people watching for them. Uh, so anyway, I guess my main concern is changing that verbiage. To be multifamily and are the folks who are the current owners of this property going to be conscious? Landowners. And builders. Um, with concern to this very, um, special neighborhood. Where we currently don't have anything like this.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else online that wants to give a comment?
This is Rusty Trespass. I'd like to make a comment, please.
Hi Rusty, please go ahead.
So I live at nine eight nine Swingley Road in Livingston, Montana here, and. Just before I even start. Um, what I've already gotten written down, I'd like you to pay attention to the time. And the document you have this in, which I'm understanding is a housekeeping document. So I would like to express my strong reservations about the decision to implement ordinance thirty forty-one. As written by ci- city staff. And to encourage you to listen to the zoning board's recommendations instead. I understand the intention to update the city of Livingston zoning code and make it more comprehensive. However, there are several key concerns that I believe should be addressed before moving forward. First and foremost. The proposed change to allow multifamily dwellings in R two districts is significant departure from the existing regulations. This alteration goes beyond the scope of a routine housekeeping document and warrants a more thorough review and discussion. It is crucial to consider the potential impact on the character, infrastructure, and the quality of life in affected neighborhoods. Such a substantial change could, should not be made without careful consideration and input from the community. Additionally, it is crucial to mention that the zoning board, which is composed of individuals with expertise in planning and land use. Voted against the multifamily dwellings in R two. Their decisions should not be taken lightly as it reflects their considered judgment on the matter. Ignoring, ignoring their input and proceeding with the implementation without a compelling justification. Risks undermining the credibility and effectiveness of the zoning board. Which plays a vital role in ensuring responsible and thoughtful development. Furthermore, it is important to note that the city staff's only reasoning for change is to support a growth policy that I. Thought was intended to be a flexible tool for guiding future development. Rather than a fixed and unalterable plan. This further underscores the need for a comprehensive evaluation of the proposed amendments as they have long-term. And for the city's growth and development. While the public will supposedly have a say in these matters, it's imperative their, their input is sought and genuinely considered. Before im- implementing such significant changes. The provided information highlights that the proposed code amendments aim to improve, prove clarity and consistency in the zoning code. While these are all valid goals, it is essential to ensure that any modifications made do not compromise the integrity of the existing code. Or create confusion among stakeholders. I urge you to thoroughly review and address these concerns to ensure that the proposed changes align with the best interests of this community. Considering these concerns, I strongly recommend that the decision to implement ordinance thirty forty-one be reconsidered. Tabled for a future meeting or simply not passed tonight as presented by city staff. It is crucial to foster transparency, open dialogue, and inclusive decision-making processes. When it comes to zoning code amendments that have significant implications for the city's growth and development. Not having an ordinance change like this in a housekeeping document would be a great start. I trust that you will carefully evaluate the issues raised here and make an informed decision that serves the best interest of our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rusty. Are there other folks online that want to give comment? All right, now it's anybody in person or online. This public hearing is closed, and now we'll move back over to the commission. Um, I have a couple of follow-ups based on public comment. We're all okay with me starting there? Um. I would love to hear, Mr. Gager, if you could share some of that. Sort of like the meaning of multifamily, um, in this context. I understand the concerns of a community and how it could change, um. The, the concerns about how it impacts the neighborhood. Particularly, I'd also like to hear, um. The impacts for safety and pedestrians. I know that's a high priority for the commission is having like walkable, viable neighborhoods. And so how this, this kind of, um, update. Impacts. Those aspects of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm, a- absolutely. So I will, um. Start with the, the clarification on, on exactly what, um. Th- those two changes entail specifically with regard to multifamily and, um, the. The first commenter, um, made. the first commenter um made specific note of a property um in her neighborhood, I believe on F Street, if I'm not mistaken. And I'll use that as a illustrative example in my may for the commission, um because it is the one that has been presented and so um and I, I'll, I'll start by saying, um as, as Jen Sieversen pointed out, uh when we did the first read of the ordinance, um there is nothing contained in ordinance three zero four one that changes the density of the R two zone. I think if I'm, if I may interject, I think that we, I, I've used the term density. And I think that if you, if you don't mind defining that, I think that might be a central sticking point and like where some, where's, where some people might um be losing it. Yeah, no, and me. Fair, fair clarification that I will say there is nothing in this document that changes the required minimum lot size uh for a dwelling within the R two and so the current minimum lot size within R two is thirty-five hundred square feet and on a thirty-five hundred square foot lot is allowed a residence as well as an accessory dwelling unit, okay? And so uh we are not changing that. All we are saying is that in a situation such as a double lot as exists on F Street, that rather than um having separate um primary residents and A V U on each lot, that if those two lots are under a shared ownership, all four of those residential units, the two primaries and the two A D Us could be located within one building, one, one adjoining building and so it, it allows for slightly more efficient, you know, construction methodology. It allows for a clustering of the density on such a double lot that would take such a a structure and um and so that really is, is, is what we're doing is and, and you know extrapolating out that simple um you know, example that I had on F Street of, of a double lot. You know, if we were to take that out to a triple or a quadruple lot, you know, rather than having uh three or four different structures on that lot, uh the owner would be allowed to construct simply just one structure on, on that lot that, you know, contains those, those entitled uh residential uses. So um hopefully Chair Nudes that provides a little bit of clarity uh a- on that item. And then um you know, with, with regard to um pedestrian impacts of the change, um you know, I, I certainly would say that um you know, a- as you pointed out, nothing has changed in the, in the parking requirements and so um all of the, the off-street parking that, that would previously exist and does still exist. And um and, and perhaps, um you know, I, I might offer the, depending on the, the location of, of such a lot that may get a multifamily house, certainly the, the sightlines for uh traffic um have an opportunity to be improved and so that would therefore improve pedestrians' safety as well. Um I'm not sure if there were some other impacts that you had, but that's the one that immediately comes to mind is that by uh clustering development on a lot, not only is open space preserved, but also there were sightlines for um driving jam pedestrians.
I think maybe it gets to what Commissioner Lyons is saying is just because the word multifamily is there, doesn't actually change how many people can live on a certain, or how many, excuse me, how many structures can exist on a certain piece of property and so um we're not changing the number of homes on a property. It's just the configuration of homes. The, the change is such that the configuration of homes would actually make it a little bit easier on the land because of the way infrastructure runs under properties, through properties, the way water and like uh stormwater and impervious or surfaces, I get, it would, it would sort of improve other things that the city has challenges with, right? But that's, that's the things that were being addressed and the safety and the density of people shouldn't actually be impacted by the term multifamily dwelling, is that? Okay, so the other um the other topic, it seemed to me that the other question was a little bit about process. Um and whether or not this was a significant change to the code. I feel like we've talked about that at the first reading, but if we could truncate that and briefly address that, if, if you're able to simmer it down to the main points of process and whether or not this is a substantial change to the code, I would appreciate it, Mr. Gager.
Uh absolutely, and, and the commenter referenced the, the growth policy and as you folks know, um one of, one of the city's top priorities is to update the Livingston Municipal Code to ensure that it uh complies with the growth policy. And um and, and that is a front burner issue for uh the planning director and itself. And so um we are, uh as we put together this year twenty-four budget, we are um envisioning bringing on a contractor to help us with that code update and so uh we made a very, very conscious decision um not to um cheat that process and um to allow the, the public process for the, the full code overhaul um to be very transparent in the public and so um the changes we have before us really are, are simply conforming changes that um eliminate some, some conflicts within the code. Um and, and provide the, the zoning administrator just a, a little bit um you know, more precision while she's doing interpreting, interpretations from uh real estate development professionals and others as far as what's allowable on a lot and so we have very consciously um steered away from introducing any group policy through this ordinance. We are simply uh making technical changes to um help our application of the
That was the questions that I had from the public. Do folks have things they wanna say?
I'm just gonna say one thing um. And just really reiterate, we are not adding any additional number of residents to a property. The same, we're, it will be the same number of residents that are allowed now. Um and using sort of F Street as the demonstration because I live in that, around in that neighborhood too. We are requiring off-street parking. There's several homes in that area that don't have any off-street parking. Um and so that, you know, for, for, for those folks, it's, it's better that we will require off-street parking, so you're not gonna lose as much on-street parking. And we, I will remind us all that we are having issues with affordable housing. Housing that folks can afford to live in and to be able to build units. To put four units in one building, from my understanding, can be cheaper building-wise than to build four separate units. Um and so that might create some affordability for people to be able to stay and live in our community. Um and so I think that this is an important change.
Thanks. I would just acknowledge that I do think that it's, it can be challenging to live in these um really established older neighborhoods um where maybe lots have been vacant forever and then new development is coming in. And I understand like from the resident's perspective that that can be um unsettling because you don't know what's gonna happen to that lot. Um especially if there's um any misinformation, which there almost always is misinformation out in the community about um what secondary changes may or may not be happening. We're not making any secondary changes. Parking stays the same. Um all of the other things stay the same. So I just really wanna encourage people in Livingston, if they are if they have concerns and they don't understand the impact to their property or the place where they live, to please reach out to a commissioner and we can put you in touch with Mr. Gager. If you don't have his contact information or just reach out to him directly and he can put you in contact with people that can answer your questions and help alleviate some of the concerns that you might have or if you have concerns and you notice there is conflict and problems in your neighborhood, please also take that to city staff because if something isn't working um as we have set out in code for it to work, then that also is something that Mr. Gager can address, so um don't feel like you have to wait for it to be on an agenda at a meeting, is my point. Reach out if you have questions. That's what I would say. Um alright, are we ready to vote? So we have a motion by Lyons and a second by Kale. Roll call please. No. For ordinance.
Thirty forty-one.
We're voting.
Yeah.
Thirty forty-one. What's your vote?
Four.
Mission short.
Four.
Mission on.
Four.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda for resolution, we have two. Alright. This is resolution number five zero nine zero, resolution relating to special improvement district bond. Special improvement district number one eight one, series two thousand twenty-three, fixing the form and details and providing for the execution and delivery thereof and security therefore, and providing for a loan from DNRC. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. The item before the commission this evening is what we hope is one of the final steps in the uh green acres approval process and the resolution five zero nine zero um authorizes uh the, the sale of the um bonds that will support the, the project and um I will take the opportunity to point out that the city uh initially intended to um do a um a private placement on the open market, but in the uh several months since the project was approved by the commission, we have actually uh worked with the uh Montana DNRC um to identify a uh a low-interest loan program that this project can qualify for and so uh as a result of that is the overall cost um to any property owner affected by the creation of the S I D uh should be lower due to the, the substantially lower interest rates involved in the DNRC loan relative to the uh the private placement. So I will stand for any questions you may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? No questions?
No clarifying.
Yeah, okay. So if someone makes a motion, please also ask the city manager to sign the resolution and not just me, so that we can move it forward.
I make motion to approve resolution five zero nine zero to authorize chair and city manager to sign resolution number five zero nine zero.
I'll second. Thanks for that addition. You just made my life much easier. Motion by Schwartz and second by Kale. Uh commit, uh public comment. Is there anyone here that wants to comment on this resolution five zero nine zero? I don't see anyone in person. Anybody online? Not seen any. Public comment, the resolution five zero nine zero is closed. Commissioners. I just wanna reflect and wonder how many times we voted on green acres. Uh just as an example of a project that's relatively straightforward and how many votes it takes the commission to move something forward. It's a good reminder of what a big project might take when this is not the biggest project. It's still pretty big.
But it's nice, we don't have to issue a bond for this. And I, I think it's a little more straightforward.
Yeah.
Yeah. This is a good news thing, yeah. I'm really happy with that, so.
Well stated. Anyone else wanna add to it? Good comments. Alright, moving on. We have a motion by Schwartz and second by Kale. Roll call please. For Commissioner Freeman.
No, four.
Okay.
Or.
Commissioner Lyons.
Or.
Motion passes. Look at us go. Alright, where are we at? We got another resolution, five zero nine one. Resolution of the city of Livingston, city commission authorizing the city manager to sign a contract with the Abbey Agency for Professional Services to update the city logo and branding for the city of Livingston. Mr. Danger.
Thank you, Chair Nudes. The item before you is actually the culmination of a process that started in this room about two months ago with the suggestion from uh the commission that we uh as a city will be look at the, the city logo and associate the brand and so uh the city released a request for proposals in, in late March and uh we received proposals on, in mid-April and since that time, a team of city staff uh that represents nearly all of the departments of the city um has evaluated the responses that were received and that group has unanimously, unanimously recommended that the city award a contract uh to the Abbey Agency to lead our brand development project. So I will stand for any questions that the commission may have.
Questions, commissioners? Not seeing any right now. We'll keep it moving.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Gager, there's no line for you to sign on this one. Did you, do you need to sign this resolution? When you're signing, but this one?
Uh you know, I will, I will sign the contracts um that will come out.
Right, so, so let's not make our city manager feel sad and donate him for the motion because there's no line for him to sign. So um who wants to make the motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution five zero nine one.
Second.
Right. Which was Schwartz. Big with Freeman. Public comment. Start within the room. Your comments on the logo firm. Anybody online? Anybody wanna comment on resolution five zero nine one? Nobody online. Public comments closed for resolution five zero nine one. Commissioners.
See what they got.
Can you yield?
Yeah, you.
I, I'll chime in and say, um I, I think that this is great. Um I like the diversity of departments. I understand that our planning department wasn't able because they were busy working on the first four hours of our meeting packet or however long that was. Um I like that, I like that folks were chosen from across the organization. Um I do notice that the Montana examples are focused heavily on tourism, so I just want to uh recognize that our community is hoping to diversify and not just be only a tourist community and that's at least the feedback I've got from the, as a commissioner, so my hope is that we'll get something you know, different than the other Montana logos and something more um holistic for Livingston. Otherwise, I'm excited. This is gonna be great. Other commissioners, you wanna say anything? That's a big chance.
I'm excited to see what they can write us with. Um I really like, I did like their proposal as well. Um and they, they've worked in Montana before. They've worked in other gateway communities in Montana, which I think is great. So yeah, I'm excited to get something new and something that we can use in all aspects of the city. Um that all matches and the same. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Uh I also appreciated that they've worked in other um gateway communities. Kind of like outdoor oriented communities. I think that um that's something that is part of our identity and so I think that they'll be able to capture that. Um I'm also excited for a new city logo because then my mission jacket will have an old city logo and you would make it vintage. It'll express that I've been here for a long time. And so I'm really looking forward to that change.
I was thinking the first city of Livingston tactic I have is really bleeding and so the next one will be much more crisp and clear. But that's where I was going with it. Um any other comments before we vote? Alright, let's vote. Roll call please. For Fisher Kale or Commissioner Freeman?
Four.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Four.
Commissioner Lyons?
Four.
Motion passes. What's next? I have an agenda for that. Hold up and see. Alright, we already did action item ten A. So here we go for ten B. I have it written down. I move to enter into closed session to discuss both personnel matters and litigation pursuant to title two, chapter three, section two, or three of the Montana code annotated. Do I have a segment?
Second.
Yeah, oh. Carrie was closer, so the sound got to me first. Carrie was closer, so the sound got to me first. Some same motion by Newson, second by Kale, on favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
You say aye?
I said aye.
All right. Aye, aye. With five oh, we're moving into closed session. And then.
Yeah, they're for the. If they're.
All right. So we are now at city manager comments, Mr. Gager.
I wish everyone who is still with us a good evening and I apologize for the late hour. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lyons.
Good night.
Commissioner Friedman.
Good night.
My sure.
Good night.
I am going to share our. Public facing. Sort of consensus about our city manager evaluation with the newspaper in the next few days. So folks that are following that will watch for it in the news. And good night. So motion, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Lyons and a second by Schwartz, all in favor, say aye.
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 Five zero. This Livingston City Commission meeting is adjourned at eleven oh seven P M. Good night, everyone.